Call to order, the meeting of the Salem Housing Authority for July 14th, 2014. Would the recorder please follow roll?
Commissioner Tesler?
President.
Commissioner Nanki?
Here.
Commissioner Claussen is absent. Commissioner Dickey?
Here.
Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Commissioner Benars?
Here.
Commissioner Clem?
Here.
Commissioner Hine?
Here.
Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have no one signed up for public comment. Is there anyone that would like to address the Salem Housing Authority? Commissioner Nanki, consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would move the consent calendar. Just making sure that one of these wasn't in regards to that, as provided.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion for the consent calendar. Mr. Wilch, do you want to give us an explanation on any of these information reports?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Only to bring one particular article to your attention on the program management report, the Community Connections, SHA's First Steps Program, which is a voucher lottery that we maintain on an ongoing basis for social service agencies to recommend clients to us who are homeless. We would house them and those social service agencies would continue to provide services. And that's the most appropriate model for helping people get from homelessness to stable housing. Just want to point that out.
Very good. Any questions? Mr. Wilch, it indicates there be a staff presentation on Parkway East and Parkway West renovation. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'd be really brief. Have about 12 pictures of our construction renovation projects at the Salem Housing Authority's undertaking, Parkway West, Parkway East, Robert Lindsey Tower.
Great.
This first picture is just the very beginning of Robert Lindsey Tower. You'll see two workmen on the roof. There's some roof repairs to be made. And they were the individuals that ended up on this 120-foot boom, power washing the brick, looking for cracks, crevices, leaks, so we could maintain and refinish the brick. We're back at Parkway West now. This is a typical unit that's been transformed, is transforming into a fully accessible and adaptive handicap unit. We're going to have six accessible handicap units in Parkway. We have none now, so that's huge important for us. Actually, the first ADA unit is occupied by a family of five with the youngest child having a disability bound to a wheelchair, so we have a lot of clients that have that sort of service needs, and so we're happy to be able to do that. This is a typical demolition of a ground floor unit at Parkway. Down to the studs on the first floor, as you go up to the second, third floors of the building, a little bit more selective demolition. The header there, the large board going vertically, that is a new header that we put in. What we found in the structural elements of these projects, of these buildings, is that there was quite a bit of dry rot on boards that were exposed to three sides or more than one side. And so this header's been replaced, and that should certainly shore up the building Here's some water vapor that we've affixed to the sheathing to ensure that moisture control and water stays out of the building. Three-story buildings, we are sprinkling all the three-story buildings in Parkway. In the distance there is the fire vault. Coming to me is the trench that connects into the city main and going the other direction are where the water line connections will go into the three buildings you see in the background there. This is the water source in the units for the sprinklers. A lot of concrete is being poured, new sidewalks, new ramps, new ADA accessibility, new patios. Those forms go down about 20 to 24 inches of concrete's being poured there. They're not going to go anywhere, as opposed to the previous structures that we had that had some play and some sinkage. This is a typical street elevation. On your left, you'll see the large concrete patio that's not quite yet finished in this picture. The new sidewalks, you'll see in the middle there where the curbs come up, that's a slope ramp for wheelchair accessibility. New units, new kitchens, new cabinets, new flooring. Not new appliances. New appliances can be added at a later date if we have some residual funds left over or in contingencies. And that's what I have.
Very good. Any questions? Just one, Mr. Wilch. How are the tenants doing in all this?
Well, I, yeah, good question. I kind of skipped over the bifurcated picture that had the tower with breakfast on the table. So, that breakfast on the table was really for the seniors at the Robert Lindsey Tower. We're trying to continue to engage them. Right now, there are 20 seniors that are temporarily relocated in a residence, short-term stay. They think it's a vacation. They're really happy. We're going to bring them back as soon as we can because we know they'll be happier. Our residents in Parkway, which is 128 units, we have a lot of families coming and going into short-term relocation units, but we're getting them back into their housing within a five-week period. So it's not short by any means, but a reasonable timeframe for folks, and they seem to feel pretty comfortable with that, coming back to a newer and improved unit.
Great. Thank you very much. Commissioner Nanki?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sprinkler piping. The picture went by pretty fast. Is all that piping exposed inside of the unit?
No, there's going to be a soffit that will
Okay.
Cover it up.
Just as far as having people not hang things on and stuff like that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Are there any other questions? Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you. If I can go back a little ways, I'm slow on the take-up. On your management report, you have voucher programs, you have Section 8, and then you have the Veterans Assistance Programs, and then you have a family program, unification program?
Yes, sir.
Do people, can people qualify for more than one, or how does that go? Say I qualify for the family one, but yet I'm a veteran. Do I have opportunity for more voucher money, or how does that play out?
The answer is no. You can really only participate in a single program unless it's other than a housing program. You can receive housing assistance, and you can certainly receive social service assistance, and you can stack those up based upon need. Our big voucher pool of about 3,100, those are for the general public, income-eligible. The other vouchers are more specific niche kinds of vouchers, like the family unification. That's about children that maybe aren't at home, or families that haven't been together and trying to bring them back. DHS actually refers those families to us, just as the Veterans Administration refers the veterans to us for the VASH, Veteran Service Related voucher program.
Then, does the Housing Authority manage more than just the city of Salem? Do you go outside into the county?
We operate within the urban growth boundary.
Okay, that's good. Thanks.
Commissioner Benars?
Thank you. Just refresh my memory a little bit. How many units are we talking about refurbishing?
At Parkway East and Parkway West combined is 124 units, and then there's 62 units at Robert Lindsey Tower for a total of 186 units, which is about 40 percent of our income-producing owned portfolio.
And all those are low-income?
Everything we have is low-income.
And how much money are we spending on those 186 units?
The combined hard cost is $24 million. Total project cost is closer to $35 million.
I'll quickly do my math here, but isn't that around, what, $200,000 a unit?
186, 25, $170,000 a unit.
It's a fair chunk of change when, you know, to put those up in the first place, per unit on a normal apartment is, what, $50,000, $60,000 per unit. We're spending a chunk of change. But I know we're doing a lot more than a standard apartment because these are ADA accessibility, so a lot of them are.
We are renovating these to as closely to as new as we possibly can.
Just looking after dollars, it's just a lot of money. I like the project, it's just a lot of money.
Anyone else? Okay. We have a motion on the floor on the consent calendar. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. I show no special orders of business, unfinished business, or new business, so the Housing Authority is adjourned.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome. We're so pleased to see that so many people have come this evening. We have several items on the agenda, obvious of great concern and interest throughout the community, and we really appreciate each and every one of you who is here. I want to be sure that you all know that there are sign-up sheets, and Mike Goderbaugh, staff at the, standing right over here, can help you sign up. If you hadn't signed up on any of the sheets and you wanted to testify, please be sure to do so, and then I'll ask again at the end of, when we run through the list. I always look around and ask if there's anyone else who didn't get on the list. So if you see someone come in and you know that they wanted to testify, you can alert them. They're still able to sign up to do that. Okay. It's my pleasure to bring to order our Urban Renewal Agency meeting for July 14th, 2014. And we will have the roll call. Thank you.
Board Member Bennett?
Here.
Board Member Tesler?
President.
Board Member Nanki?
Here.
Board Member Claussen is absent. Board Member Dickey?
Here.
Board Member Rogers?
Here.
Board Member Benars?
Here.
Board Member Clem?
Here.
Chair Peterson?
Here. Thank you. All right, we have an addition actually to this agenda, which is the additions, deletions, and agenda, deletion, addition, excuse me, I'm going to start over. The additions and deletions to the agenda. And Member Bennett, do you have a motion regarding that?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move the additions and deletions to the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Count, by Member Bennett, and seconded by Member Benars to move the additions and deletions to the agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. I don't believe we have any reports of boards, commissions, or committees. Is that correct?
Correct.
Don't have any?
No.
Okay. We're going to move to public comment. Do we have people signed up for public comment? Okay. Oh, okay. We don't have anyone signed up for public comment here, but we do have a cellphone found in a woman, in the women's restroom. So if someone's missing a cellphone, if you want to have a phone call, you're going to need that phone. Okay. So we have no one signed up for public comment. Is there anyone here who wanted to speak on this section? All right. Hearing none? All right, we'll move on then to the consent calendar. Member Bennett, do you have a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move the consent calendar.
Second.
It's been moved by Member Bennett and seconded by Member Benars to move the consent calendar. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Yes. Counselor Bennett?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I want to mention at least one of the items on the consent calendar, that one of the activities we're approving this evening is a grant agreement between the city and the Urban Renewal Agency to provide $700,000 of funds to the city for capital improvements to the downtown parking structures. This is one of those items that has been of real concern for some time, that we continue to spend urban renewal dollars on parking-related issues with no end in sight.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any further discussion regarding the action items? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. And there is one information report in your binder for the Urban Renewal Agency. And I believe we have one special order of business.
Yes, correct.
Okay. I believe
Member Clem's motion.
Right, okay. Member Clem, do you have a motion for us under special orders of business?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would ask council's, or agency's patience as I read this motion. And I move that the Urban Renewal Agency authorize the executive director to prepare a report to the agency regarding the current status of all outstanding loans made using urban renewal funds in all applicable urban renewal areas and the loan indebtedness in each applicable area. This information should include the following: the status of each loan, whether it is on schedule or delinquent, and what the repayment date is; the identification of loan parties, including assignment of interest or responsibility; the capacity in each of the urban renewal areas for future loans and their current fiscal year budget for loans. This motion does not include grants or federal program loans, but does include urban renewal area tax increment loans.
Okay. All right. It's been moved by Member Clem and seconded by Member Benars to support the motion regarding the current, a report on current status of outstanding urban renewal loans. Is there discussion? Member Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Urban Renewal Agency years ago started and has funded through the toolbox some incentive programs to try to revitalize downtown areas, storefronts, but then we've expanded that into certain renewal, urban renewal areas for development loans, loans to help create jobs or match financing, to revitalize blighted areas. This loan system has been in place for, I don't know, maybe 12 years, but the idea is that, you know, with the downtown changing, with the economy changing, with the kinds of things that incentivize people to develop, the market is changing, and the question is, is our current loan program working? Is it giving us the kind of impact we want? Should there be other incentives? So I think, just as a starting spot, the Finance Committee has already received this information, and I'm simply asking that we, as an urban renewal agency, take a look at it and assess for ourselves that, you know, that we're running an effective loan program, but really, are we running an effective revitalization program for the blighted areas and the urban renewal areas? So I think it's, we haven't looked at it in a while, and I think it's a good idea to ask staff for the information and let the data show us what it does.
All right. There's a motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Yes. Member Rogers?
Thank you, Mayor. On your second bullet on identification of loan parties, including assignment of their responsibilities, do we have a, is there a legal responsibility for privacy that we would violate if we approved this motion?
Ten Atchison City Attorney. Member Rogers, no. This is a public money, be funded to private parties, so that would be public information that we could disclose.
All right. Further discussion? There's a motion on the floor. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. We have no unfinished business for the Urban Renewal Agency, and we do not have a public hearing scheduled this evening for this agency, and no new business, so this meeting is adjourned. I'll now call to order this evening's meeting for the Salem City Council for July 14th, 2014. Would the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Bennett?
Here.
Counselor Tesler?
President.
Counselor Nanki?
Here.
Counselor Claussen is absent. Counselor Dickey?
Here.
Counselor Rogers?
Here.
Counselor Benars?
Here.
Counselor Clem?
Here.
Mayor Peterson?
Here. Thank you very much. Our first item of business is the approval of additions and deletions to the agenda. Counselor Bennett, do you have a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move approval of additions and deletions to the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Benars to move the approval of the additions and deletions to the agenda. Is there, are there any questions or discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. We now have time for council and city manager comment. I'm going to ask city councilors who have a comment. I see Counselor Bennett's hand is up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just appreciate it. Madam Mayor, I've asked about this before. I wanted to follow up again this week on understanding what we know and kind of what we're doing relative to oil trains coming through the city. There are various types of oil trains. There certainly is a great deal of concern, I know in my ward, which is along the tracks to some depth, and I'd like to just kind of understand what's going on, what kind of information we're being provided, and generally what the capacity is in the city to handle any problems that might occur.
Thank you, Counselor Bennett. I'd like to ask Deputy Chief Greg Hadley to come to the podium, and he'd be happy to respond to that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I think the simple answer, or the quickest answer to your question, Counselor Bennett, is there is no reportable quantities that are coming, that is being transported through Salem or Marion County. With that said, if I could clarify what the reportable quantities are. The, when Bakken oil was first being transported, obviously there were some significant accidents that occurred. And the Federal Department of Transportation issued an order which required rail companies to report any quantities that they were shipping in excess of 1 million gallons or more. So a typical train transporting Bakken oil is usually, well, a million gallons or more, 30,000 gallons per tanker. Most of these trains are in excess of 90 to 100 tanker cars. They're called unit trains or mile-long trains. Within the state of Oregon, they're, well, first of all, they were required to start reporting to local jurisdictions if they were transporting more than a million gallons. On July 8th, the Oregon State Fire Marshal's Office began posting so the public could see what train companies were transporting what amount of Bakken oil through the state of Oregon. And mind you, again, it has to be a million gallons or more. There is some oil being transported in Multnomah County and Klamath County. There is no reportable quantities being transported through Marion County or Salem. Going back to, again, what we discussed as far as how they are usually transporting this oil, it's typically in long trains with multiple tanker cars. That does not mean that there could be a possibility of a smaller quantity coming through Salem, but what we are finding out from the rail companies and in discussion with the Fire Marshal's Office is the probability of that is slim to none, for the fact that they're transporting them in larger trains, not coming through this area. We continue working with the State Fire Marshal's Office on this, getting the information as it's updated. And also, the governor is still dealing with providing educational-type opportunities and looking into this a little bit further to try to provide better clarity and also help with local jurisdictions and their ability to be able to handle an event if one was to happen within one of the local jurisdictions.
So we're prepared for an event. Do I understand that? Do you feel we're at a capacity to deal with problems along those tracks?
I think we are prepared, like most other jurisdictions within the state. If we were to have an event on a track with a crude oil type event, would we be able to provide the initial stabilization, providing foam would be the method that we would try to, obviously if it was burning? We have foam capabilities, obviously with our ARF at the airport. Do we have the quantities of foam that we would need to be able to put out a large tanker fire? No, but no jurisdiction within the state does either. One of the discussions through the group with the governor that's looking into this is providing caches of foam throughout the state that would be readily accessible to be able to be transported to any jurisdiction, to be able to assist with ultimately the mitigation of the event. So would we be able to initially handle it? Absolutely. I think like most fire departments within the state, we could. We're also very fortunate here to have the Region 13 hazmat team housed here in Salem that would be able to assist with that type of event also. So, you know, emergency preparedness, yeah, I believe that we're in a position that we could handle the initial response and then be able to call in the needed resources that we would need to be able to bring closure to that event.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I hope we will be kept apprised of this as any rules change, or if there is notification from the Fire Marshal's Office or whoever notifies you, however that is being done, if we start to see a change in the pattern of transport through Salem. I appreciate you being prepared to answer my questions. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that information. Very helpful. All right. Other councillors. Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two quick things. One, at last meeting I had mentioned the Mill Creek Corporate Center, the reservoir that'll feed that would be coming online, it's actually coming online tomorrow, so I'll be watching my water pressure with great anxiety whether or not I need to change out my fire pump. Beyond that, the information reports further on in the agenda tonight have an item regarding the city being awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for our CAFER, otherwise known as the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. We've received that 16 times now, but I wanted to make sure that people were still here so that I can say that if you want to know how the city's money is so that I can say that if you want to know how the city's money is in and outed, the Management Discussion and Analysis section of that is very short. You can understand the buckets of money that move through the city, why we say we can't spend this money on that. It's a great document. It's on our website as well. C-A-F-R, underneath the Finance heading. And congratulations to staff on that. They work very hard, and our auditors are always very pleased with the interactions that take place and the level at which we account for and report our financial transactions.
Great. Thank you. Counselor Benars?
Just for a little levity, I just want to let you know that your city council is now evenly split among the male population with facial hair and no facial hair. Well, there was a confusion a couple of weeks ago as to who was who because we had different beards that were on the road.
I can't keep track of all of that, so please be sure to sit where your name is so I can get that part right. Okay. Other comments. Counselor Tesler?
Yes, I was just going to say, "beardless and proud." I just wanted to say that the sidewalks in the Gayety Hill District are really looking a lot better. I particularly remember almost breaking my toe on one of the sidewalks going uphill or High Street there. I really do appreciate Public Works replacing the sidewalks. They look beautiful. They're really nice. They're handicapped accessible. The curbs look great. Very, very, very nice job from Public Works. Heard from a lot of people about the nice new sidewalks, so appreciate it greatly. So just want to kind of get that out there.
Great. Yes?
If I may, thank you, Counselor Tesler. Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director. Just to be clear, that is being paid for by the $1 million allocation from the Savings and Streets and Bridges Bond, and so that's how we're able to fund those sidewalks. The plan is to finish up Gayety Hill, go down High Street to LaFell, and then cut over into Fairmont Hill, and then work our way around West Salem and then back to Northeast Salem until, you know, the $1 million runs out. Two years, three years, we're just keep working it. So thank you for allocating the money.
Great. Okay. I have a couple of comments myself. One thing, a couple of little housekeeping things, though. We do try to be sure that everyone has a seat. So I know some people have come in a little later and may not have a seat. And I know Mike Goderby was here somewhere, would be happy to help you find seats. There are a few vacant seats, and then we also have chairs that we can bring out from the side, too. So please, everyone, try to find a seat and be comfortable. And I love the voices of children, so please, if you're here with children, don't worry about that. I love their voices, and we're happy they're here. We're happy. Yes. All right. There she is. She says, "I agree." I can tell. Okay. So I'm pleased to talk about some economic development activities that I noticed as I was reading through the council packet and preparing for the meeting this evening. And I just wanted to draw your attention because, you know, sometimes we feel like little things aren't, you know, talked about enough. And we actually have several leases and new things to draw your attention to. These are action items, but the Budget Car Rental is going to be continuing its lease at the Salem Airport. We have a new leasing called Strawberry Seed in Chamacada Parquet that wants to lease there. And Counselor Bennett already spoke about the capital improvements in the parking structure. And, you know, I really want to emphasize that we care so much, we really do, about the downtown parking structures and the downtown parking availability. And that investment of $710,000 is really an investment for the shoppers and the businesses and everyone who enjoys downtown. We want to make that as safe and easy to use as they can be. So better elevators and cleanliness and repair is so important there. Of course, we're still working on the Minto Brown Island Bridge, and that is still going to happen, and that's an important, really, I think, asset that will be for the downtown as well as for the entire community. And I wanted to also mention one other item, a Toolbox Grant that has been allocated to the Grocery Outlet Store, which is just north of downtown, which, if you live downtown, it's your kind of your local grocery store, and they're just doing a great job. And a $21,000 Toolbox Grant, I believe, was correct. I'm seeing the nod, yeah. So I feel very optimistic about some of these indications that businesses want to be in the downtown area, businesses want to do business as leases of the city of Salem. And I'm pleased with the way the staff have worked to really nurture those relationships and bring about those leases. So that concludes my remarks, and I believe we have something from our city manager.
Yes, I have two or three things. The first one is a very generous gift from the Salem Library Foundation. And every baby born in Salem will be receiving a packet, either in English or Spanish, from the library, that will have the baby's first book and an application for their first library card, and a brochure with poems, and then another brochure that talks about the importance of reading to children at all ages. So I think it's just a wonderful project, and we really appreciate our great foundation for sponsoring that. I also wanted, just to give you, there's an article, or a staff report in your packet about the Fourth of July. I wanted to do a quick summary and to thank all of our staff from about five different departments in the city, but primarily Public Works and Parks and then Police, Fire, and others for doing such a great job. We picked up the event very late in the spring. We estimate that about 12,000 people attended, which was wonderful attendance. And at the last, I think during the last week, Merrill Lynch Investments Incorporated volunteered to pay half the cost for the fireworks, so we very much appreciate their support. Salem Riverfront Carousel and AC Discovery Village also participated to a tremendous extent with activities. We had eight food vendors, two toy and trinkets vendors, and a decorative wood carving vendor. And at the last minute, some people who thought there was going to be a classic car show came, and so staff figured out how to make sure that they were able to have the classic car show. And then we have live entertainment from the Sugar Sauce Band and the Rock and Roll Cowboys, and I think they did a great job. In addition to all of that work that the staff did, putting that on at the last minute and making sure that people had a wonderful time, we also had two major softball tournaments that weekend at Wallace Marine Park. So I think everything went well, and we will be coming back to council to see if you want us to go out for a promoter next year to either do the event or help with the event or whether you want the city to put it on again. But I really want to thank all of the excellent staff, Mark Bechtel and his staff, Becky George, who always done a wonderful job with all of our events for the great work they did. The next thing I have is, there was an article in Today's Statesman Journal on the status of the Pringle Square Development Project, which I think may have given the impression that the city's building permits were holding up the project. And I talked to Jason Takarski, the developer, this afternoon, and he asked me to read this to council and to the community to clarify. He said, "We have all the necessary permits from the city of Salem to allow for construction activities to occur into September. The delay in authorizing additional construction activities is due to higher-than-anticipated construction bids for the concrete work, which is the next scope of work to be performed on their project. We've worked diligently to address the concrete cost overage and are pleased to report it is now at an acceptable level. We are out to bid on every line item, and we'll have final numbers by July 28th, at which time we will authorize the concrete work to begin, followed by all other scopes of work. By mid-September, the concrete work will have advanced to the point of allowing framing to begin for the apartments. The balance of permits needed from the city of Salem will be secured well in advance of actual need. We are grateful for the hard work and dedication of our design and construction team and city of Salem staff." So he wanted to make sure you knew that, and everyone has been working very diligently on that project. Anyway, has a great team put together, and I think the community is really excited to see that come together. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Were there any other councilor comments? All right. Thank you. We have a proclamation this evening. I don't see a portable microphone. It may be planned to be used in the council. You know what? I'll use the one on the wall. It's okay. Sally, do you? We can get that from Sally, Mayor. Things that I get to do. Oh, good. Thank you. All right. So one of the pleasant things, many pleasant things I get to do as mayor, but one of them is issuing and delivering proclamations. And our proclamation tonight is in celebration, really, an announcement and celebration of the Salem Art Fair and Festival, which is coming up. And with me tonight are Sandra Burnett, who is the Executive Director of the Salem Art Association, and your guest.
Jessica, who is the co-chair of the Art Fair Committee.
Jessica's last name is?
Amos Michaelrody.
Thank you. I love it. Good. All right. So our proclamation this evening is, "Whereas the arts are an essential part of building and sustaining strong, healthy, diverse, and vibrant communities; and whereas the arts are a basic and essential part of our children's education and of our continuing education as adult citizens in a democracy; and whereas the arts are a critical sector in Salem's economy and a key factor in recruitment of new businesses because of their role in creating a higher quality of life for all; whereas the arts are a reason for the growing success of tourism in Salem, as people come here to attend festivals, fairs, performances, and exhibitions; and whereas the Salem Art Fair and Festival was started in 1949 and in 2014 is celebrating 65 years of serving the city and the region; and whereas the Salem Art Fair and Festival is the largest art festival in Oregon, bringing to the Salem community the cultural enrichment of over 200 artists and musicians from around the country, as well as some from foreign countries; and whereas the Salem Art Fair and Festival presents an economic boost for the local economy and for the artists by attracting approximately 35,000 attendees, and serves as a source of revenue that sustains the year-round programs of the Salem Artist Association for the Salem community. And now therefore I, Anna Peterson, Mayor of Salem, hereby proclaim July as Appreciation for the Arts Month, and I encourage all to celebrate by participating in the Salem Art Fair and Festival and any other artistic activities and experiences available throughout the city in July and throughout the year. Sandra Burnett and Jessica, it's my honor to be able to present to you this proclamation and to welcome you to city council and wish you the very best with the art fair coming up. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor Peterson, and city councils, and community of Salem. We appreciate that, the recognition that art matters, that it matters for the economic and the social and the educational well-being of us all. And if I may just add, art is the, through the arts, you see the origins of a community. It reflects the soul of a community. And I think it's very much to Salem's credit that it has so many cultural institutions, so many facilities for the arts here in Salem. So on behalf of all of us, thank you very much.
Thank you. Just on behalf of all the volunteers, I've moved to Salem 15 years ago, and for 15 years I eagerly anticipate the art fair every summer. So it's really such an honor as an artist and someone who loves the arts to just be a part of the event. Anyone that you run into at the event, volunteers especially, but artists and patrons and sponsors and vendors, they love being there. And it's just, I think, the best event in Salem, and it makes everyone's lives better. Arts, the best. So thank you.
Okay. So everyone, get ready for our big citywide, actually, because so many people attend Art Fair and Festival. It's really like a party for all of us. And it starts on Friday morning at 10 o'clock.
It starts with the kids, the kids parade starts at about, I think it's 8 o'clock, the kids parade. Can somebody correct me? It's 8. It starts at 8. And they come down Bush Street and into the park, and the gates are open from 10 o'clock, and they come through the gates. Yeah.
And it closes at?
It closes at 8:30, 9:30 after the headliners. We got two really good headliners this weekend.
Do you want to talk about the headliners?
All right. Okay. Well, you're all well-informed, and you all know the date and the time and the place. And come and have a great time at the art fair. Thank you, ladies. Thank you very much. That's for you. We now have time for public comment, and I think we probably have some people signed up? Oh, only one at this point. All right. Kurt Fisher is signed up for public comment. And this public comment on this part of the agenda, part of the evening, is for items other than our public hearings and our deliberations. Welcome.
Hi.
Hi.
My name's Kurt Fisher. I'm at 680 LaFell Street, Southeastern Salem, in Ward 2, and I came down as Acting Land Use Chair for SCAN, coming down to speak on Item 7H, which is the site plan and tree variants for the development of, the redevelopment of the former School of the Blind lot on Salem Hospital. We voted unanimously on Wednesday night to appeal that decision from the Planning Administrator, and there are three main points that we're primarily concerned about. One is the excessive amount of parking, the 87 parking spaces in excess of what the code allows on that site. We don't think it contributes to the vitality of the Central Business District to have such a huge expanse of parking, and it conflicts with many of our transportation goals that are in the parking management plan and are longtime goals to promote alternative modes and promote downtown livability and vitality. The second item is the improvements to the intersection at Winter and Mission Street. That was a intersection that was identified in the recent Bike Walk Salem planning process that was identified as a Tier 1 improvement project, that was identified as one of the barriers that impedes biking and walking travel into the Central Business District. We have policies to encourage biking and walking, especially, we have land use goals to, that we are obligated to meet to encourage biking to work. And this is a intersection that is on the Willamette Scenic Bikeway and serves three of the top employers in the city, the state of Oregon, Willamette University, and Salem Health. My wife travels through this intersection daily, and there's daily confrontations with other road users through this intersection. We participated in that process with a good faith that those projects would move forward at the appropriate time. The final item is the removal of the trees, which we feel is a, primarily a function of the excessive amount of parking that's on the site. So we feel that if the parking maximums are enforced, then we can preserve a significant amount of the tree canopy and provide other opportunities for an adapted playground if the hospital feels that that is a significant benefit to the community, and we will certainly support that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your testimony. Before you leave the podium, do any of the councilors have any questions for Mr. Fisher? Okay. Thanks again. Appreciate that. All right. No one else was signed up. Is there someone who would like to speak and did not get a chance to get their name on the list? Okay. Seeing none, we're going to move on. We will now move to the consent calendar. Counselor Bennett, do you have a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move the consent calendar with one poll, 3.3G by Counselor Dickey.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Benars to approve the consent calendar with the exception of the one item being polled, which is 3.3G. Is that correct?
That's correct.
G, okay. And that's polled by Counselor Dickey? G, okay. And that's polled by Counselor Dickey? Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, we'll now commence our public hearings. And we start with the Public Hearing 4A, which is amending the Salem Revised Code Regulations related to the mobile food units. And I believe our city recorder has a statement to read.
The City Council will now hold a public hearing to consider adoption of Ordinance Bill Number 1114 relating to mobile food units. Failure to raise an issue in the hearing in person or by letter or failure to provide statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. A similar failure to raise constitutional issues relating to proposed conditions of approval precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. Any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence, arguments, or testimony regarding the application. The City Council shall grant such requests by continuing the public hearing or leaving the record open for additional written evidence, arguments, or testimony.
Thank you very much. And we have a staff report. Welcome.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Peterson, members of council. My name is Aaron Panko with the Planning Division. We are here tonight to discuss Code Amendment 1402 to update regulations for mobile food units. The city has heard from several mobile food unit operators that the existing regulations place unnecessary burdens on the operation of their business and have asked the city to explore options for updating the existing code. On December 9, 2013, council directed staff to bring back recommendations for amendments to allow mobile food units beyond what is currently allowed under the code. An information report was presented on April 28, which identified the barriers and issues with the current code with a recommendation from mobile food unit operators that, on items that they like to see changed. On June 9, council passed a resolution to initiate a formal code amendment to update mobile food unit regulations. On June 23, first reading of Ordinance Bill 11-14 was conducted. The existing mobile food unit regulations are found in two locations, the License Chapter and the Temporary Use Chapter, with several overlapping requirements. Mobile food unit in the existing code means any kiosk, shed, shelter, trailer, vehicle, or wagon used for the purpose of preparing, processing, or converting food for immediate consumption. Mobile food units do not include street vendors, which typically operate on the sidewalk within the public right-of-way. Peddler vehicles or vehicles selling only prepackaged items are also not included in the definition of mobile food unit. Mobile food units are licensed for a site-specific location for a period not to exceed six months and are required to move to a different site when that license expires. Mobile food units which operate at one location for a period of two hours or less do not meet the current definition for a mobile food unit and therefore aren't subject to the license requirements in the existing code. Several mobile food units with a business model of moving frequently between locations have taken advantage of this loophole and are not currently licensed by the city. There is a setback requirement between mobile food units 500 feet on the same side of the street and 250 feet on the opposite side of the street. This regulation only allows one mobile food unit to operate at a site, preventing multiple units from forming a pod. Operation within the right-of-way is currently prohibited, and the proposed code amendment will not change this policy. An inspection is required to verify that units are complying with zoning requirements for off-street parking and screening of equipment. Health and sanitary inspections are conducted by the County Health Department and are not checked as part of the zoning inspection. Mechanical and safety equipment is not routinely checked during the zoning inspection. However, if there's obvious issues that are found, a fire marshal or building inspector may be consulted. The proposed code amendment will consolidate existing regulations into the License Chapter and will remove mobile food units as a temporary use. The definition for a mobile food unit will be broadened to capture both units which set up in a semi-permanent location and those units that move from site to site frequently. The proposed mobile food unit license requirement will be the same for semi-permanent mobile food units and for units that move from site to site. Each mobile food unit will require a license which is valid for a period of one year instead of six months. Under the proposed code, the requirement to move to a different site every two hours or every six months will be eliminated. Mobile food units will be removed from the Temporary Use category in the Use Classification Chapter and added to the same use category that eating and drinking establishments fall into, meaning that mobile food units will be permitted in the same zones where restaurants and other eating and drinking establishments are permitted. The 500-foot separation requirement between units is proposed for removal, which will allow multiple units to cluster or form pods. Existing regulations which prevent mobile food units from operating in the public right-of-way will be retained. Mobile food units may use the right-of-way for travel, but operation or sales within the right-of-way may not occur. Ice cream trucks or other vehicles selling prepackaged items exclusively do not meet the definition of mobile food unit, and therefore this regulation does not impact their operation within the right-of-way. Mobile food units will only be allowed to operate within existing approved parking lots or other hard surface areas as long as the off-street parking requirements for the other users of the off-street parking area are met. Mobile food units shall not obstruct pedestrian pathways, driveways, or drive-ais, or create a traffic or safety hazard. The existing code requires multiple food, or mobile food units to screen conduit, tanks, and storage areas. The proposed amendment will retain this development standard. However, it will only apply to units which are intended to be left parked on one site for an extended period of time. Units which move between sites frequently do not park and do not park in one place overnight are not required to screen a conduit, tanks, or storage areas. Under the current regulations, mobile food units receive a zoning inspection. The intent of the zoning inspection is to verify that mobile food units are positioned in accordance with an approved site plan for a specific site. Under the proposed code, mobile food unit operators will have the option of staying in one location for an extended period, or they can move between sites. Site plan approval is not required every time a mobile food unit operator decides to move to a different location. Therefore, the proposed code removes the requirement for a zoning inspection. All mobile food units will still be required to comply with applicable state and county health and sanitary inspections. An existing regulation requiring mobile food units to remain capable of being moved is proposed to be retained. Compliance services will continue to respond to any complaints received about the operation of a mobile food unit. Two neighborhood associations and the Salem Food Truck Association have reviewed the proposed regulations and expressed support for the code amendment. A number of letters have been received in support of updating the mobile food unit regulations. A letter voicing concern for the code update was received by the Oregon Restaurant and Lodging Association. A request for an emergency clause to be included in the ordinance was received. This request is included in the supplemental staff report in engrossed ordinance bill. If enacted, the emergency clause would make the proposed regulations effective upon adoption. We have a few late additions you'll find on your desk, a packet from Marion County Environmental Health. This packet describes the county's review process for licensing and inspecting mobile food units. And that concludes my presentation.
All right, thank you very much. We have several people signed up tonight to testify for this item. And what I usually do is to call two names at a time, and you can sort of start planning your appearance at either of the podiums. And sometimes it's difficult for me to read handwriting, so if I don't pronounce your name correctly, please help me by repeating it when you're at the microphone and also state your address and your ward, or your ward. We're going to start with Jennifer Morano and Joel Pomerantz. Welcome. Yes, and you have three minutes. And at the end of two minutes, an amber light comes on. At the end of three minutes, it's a red light.
Okay. It's a miniano. You said a...
Minana.
Miniano.
Thank you.
And speaking about the arts, I'd like to discuss the culinary arts. The mobile food vending industry is a boon to local business, not a burden. By keeping heavy restrictions in place and thus hindering local food truck business, we're only hindering growth and prosperity for everyone. A 2013 report by the National League of the Cities states that mobile vending generates approximately $650 million a year and is projected to quadruple that food revenue over the next five years. Salem doesn't need to miss out on the opportunities to capture some of that revenue, and we certainly all deserve a prosperous community. There are three things I believe Salem will see if we improve our local food truck and mobile vending community: growth in the local economy, healthier, more robust downtown businesses, and a stronger, more diverse Salem food industry. Despite what the opposition believes, public health and safety is not in jeopardy any more so from a thriving food truck industry than it is from a similarly thriving restaurant industry. Any owner or kitchen worker can bring something made from an uninspected kitchen, regardless if they operate a brick-and-mortar restaurant or food truck. I mean, hopefully they don't, but they could just walk in anytime with something that wasn't prepared in a facility that it should have been prepared in, excuse me. Further, if sanitation was always guaranteed in a restaurant, you wouldn't have reality shows like Kitchen Nightmares. Any restaurant is just as likely to be dirty and unhealthy as any given food truck, or just as clean. The idea that food trucks are just naturally unsanitary, or, excuse me, unsanitary or not following the law is simply a prejudiced thought process. And, not to plug my own business here, but Salem now has a commercial kitchen available to rent by the hour. If there was any fear that food carts or trucks are secretly using an unregistered or unregulated kitchen, then you might as well start washing your soap or locking your door 15 times, because that's a necessary worry, because there is a licensed, fully inspected kitchen that can prepare food from right here in Salem. Getting back to revenue and growth, the natural thought is that food trucks will take business away from restaurants. This is not necessarily true, but yes, they will add competition. But competition is how our capitalist system works. We need healthy competition to keep us vibrant and successful. In the long run, however, restaurants will always have the edge over food carts. The only restaurants that should be worried about a growing local food truck industry are the ones that people don't really care to eat at. We need to update and relax the current regulations to allow our food industry to thrive. By doing so, neighboring businesses will see a rise in foot traffic. The economy will see a boost in revenue, and our local food offerings will be enriched. I mentioned a report from the National League of Cities. This League of Cities has been around for 90 years, dedicating time and resources to helping city leaders build their local economies and communities. That's it. That's their only motivation. On our website, on the economic development pages, there's a report, "Food on Wheels." The entire objective of this report is to help cities understand why and how to relax outdated and ineffective policies that impede growth of mobile vending. The fact that the report exists in the first place is a testament to just how much these microbusinesses can strengthen a local economy. The industry is a driver of jobs, innovation, and diversity. Please support this proposal.
Thank you very much. Are there questions from council? No, seeing none. All right, thank you very much. Joel Pomerantz, followed by Dino Venti.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
My name is Joel Pomerantz. I'm with the Oregon Restaurant and Lodging Association. Thank you for the opportunity to provide comments on the proposed amendments to Ordinance Number 11-14 regarding mobile food carts in Salem. Mobile food carts at sporting and other outdoor events and all over really have long been a fixture in American life. When they're used as mobile units where food preparation is done beforehand, in a commissary kitchen, and they're moved after a limited period of time, problems are few. But when mobile food carts and trucks take up residence in communities that is, are no longer mobile, but are more or less permanent structures, a host of issues do arise. They include, they do include public health and safety concerns like electrical waste disposal, plumbing, fire suppression, fire danger, and public right-of-way issues. Typically, the commissary kitchen where food preparation is supposed to be done is usually somebody's home kitchen, regardless of the availability perhaps of other kitchens. That's where it happens to be done typically. And those are not usually inspected, unlike those in traditional restaurants. Food carts are intended really to be delivery vehicles and are inspected, but again, unlike restaurants, are not scored. Waste products and wastewater are disposed of typically in storm drains or other non-commercial outlets, whereas in restaurants, or restaurants are required to install grease traps and/or in septic filtration systems before disposal in public systems. Clusters of food carts don't meet the same spacing criteria required in and around restaurants, causing a potential fire hazard. In fact, pods are where most of the problems are found. Restrooms with plumbing required elsewhere are missing. While public right-of-way may be protected on paper in an ordinance, customers of these pods do tend to block sidewalks. The experience in Portland and other cities clearly shows that long-held health and safety codes are ignored by operators and by regulators. Current Salem code is consistent with the original intent of mobile food units, that they are in fact mobile. The intent is that they are based at their commissary kitchen for food preparation and proper disposal and travel to various locations to temporarily sell their products, returning to their base when finished. We suggest that if mobile units want to locate and become stationary, that they apply for the permits that are required of such food operations, otherwise known as restaurants. It should also be noted that contrary to what you may hear, and we have heard that, food carts do not enhance restaurant business. They detract from it. And it bears mentioning that it's the restaurant operators who invested their resources and their lives and are trying to realize their dreams in order to do business in Salem, who provide jobs and contribute to the city's tax base and help define a growing vibrant Salem identity that is really so well-represented downtown and throughout the city. The way I see it, the City Council has two options if you adopt the proposed amendments. Either you can expend a tremendous amount of time and money...
Excuse me, I am going to have to interrupt because the red light is on, so your time is up.
Thank you.
We appreciate your testimony. Counselors, do you have any questions? Counselor Dickey.
Thanks for coming down. I'm just curious to know if you have any food truck owners as a member of your association, or would you allow them to be members of your association?
We certainly would allow them. And we have had in the past... I don't have figures at the moment, if we have any, but I was telling someone earlier today, we actually have a fairly new member, I think been with us for about a year and a half or so, that started out as a mobile unit and now has a brick-and-mortar restaurant, doing very well.
Yes, Counselor Dickey, go ahead.
Great, thanks. And then the other question I had is... It's just escaping me. Oh, so, I'm sorry, I'll ask in a minute. Thanks.
All right. Counselor Rogers, you had your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Joel, you made a comment about restaurants are scored. And could you kind of briefly explain what that is? And then also, can mobile units be scored as well?
Restaurant inspection scores are posted typically by the county health, environmental health departments, and you can find those online here for Marion County. The scoring starts at 100 for a perfect score, and then points are taken off for various food code violations. As far as we know, the mobile units are not... They're inspected by the county health departments, but they're not scored, so that the public has no idea what those inspections resulted in. And so, you know, the issue really is about having a level playing field more than anything else here.
Other questions? Counselor Bennett.
Thank you. I want to explore with you just a bit this scoring. They are inspected. How is that inspection then reported? How would that inspection... I mean, I recall the statutes around this. I was involved in them at the time, and I... My recollection is that's really how you tell someone how they stand in terms of the inspection. So, how are food carts then told? Are they told you're superior, not superior, excellent, outstanding? Or how then would they receive the score and be able to correct themselves if they're not being treated similarly to restaurants in terms of how that information's...
That's a great question. I don't have an answer to that, but I do know that in other communities, in particular in Portland, a lot of those sort of go by the wayside in favor of a general support of the food cart. So, I don't think there's a separate evaluation mechanism.
They probably get a number, wouldn't you say? I mean, probably that's how they're...
I haven't seen those.
But you haven't not seen them. I'm a little concerned that you're holding that there is a difference in the way they are handled by the county. And I don't know if someone from county health is here to explain how they aren't.
Now, my...
I'm just concerned that there be a misunderstanding around our existing food. I'm just concerned that there be a misunderstanding around our existing food, food service.
And please let me clarify my comment along those lines. I was really referring to the experience we've seen in Portland and not in Marion County. So, please don't take that to be a comment on how inspections are done here. I don't have information about that.
Okay. I appreciate you clarifying that. Thank you.
All right. Counselor Benars have questions?
Thank you. I'm looking at the economic development. I've heard that allowing these pods to develop will bring a lot of jobs for those people from the grassroots up, and yet I hear from the other side, from the restaurants, that they've obviously invested in bricks and mortars, we've heard over and over again, and they have employees that they have to pay, and that the, a number of individuals eating meals may be cannibalized for the food pods. Have you done any, has your association done any study about the jobs lost in the Restaurant Association or the restaurants in general versus what might be gained in the food pod area?
Another good question. We haven't, but anecdotally, what we've been told by restaurant operators in Portland is that when food carts go into their immediate neighborhoods, they typically lose about 20% in business. As a result of that kind of loss, an operator, any business operator, has to try to make up for that in some way. When you're not as busy in a restaurant, you're not going to need as much help. And so, and not unlikely result would be hours being cut. So, the net effect, you know, again, we don't have data on this, but the net effect could not reasonably be...
Well, you represent the restaurants. I would understand why you would figure out what has been lost. I'm trying to figure out net, what are we going to gain on this whole thing?
Right. And so, what I'm trying to get at is, I believe that there'd probably be a net loss of jobs, not a net addition. And that's because a restaurant, a brick and mortar operation, takes a lot more people to make it go. A cart takes one or two. One of the things that you've probably, I know you've heard from restaurant owners and you've heard from two other people in the association recently, and one of the things they probably have mentioned to you is how many people have been employed. One of those, I think, was an email today from someone here locally. Between the two or three folks, they've employed something like 800 people in Salem in four different restaurants they've had in the last several years. So, take a look at that versus a few food carts with one or two people.
Well, I'll remind you that the active word that you used was in adjacent or local, if you're locales. So, in other words, it, a food pod, the state Capitol isn't going to have the same effect on sherries on South commercials it would if they were located side by side. That's really what I'm seeing. Thank you. Thank you.
I do have a question. Were there any other questions by counselors? I have a question. You were talking about the incidence of decrease in restaurant business when a food pod is located nearby? Or did you mean when an individual food cart or food, mobile unit was nearby?
The one example that comes to mind is, that was a report by a restaurant owner where they had one cart that came in across the street.
One cart? Uh-huh. Okay.
To a very established restaurant.
Uh-huh. Do you have any statistics? I'm just wondering about the effect on a restaurant or restaurants already established when a new restaurant comes in, say, down the street or across the street? Is it sort of the same kind of change of patronage?
I don't know that we have data. There probably is national data on that. And of course, the typical experience is that when a new restaurant comes in as one that has just come in here in downtown Salem, folks kind of flock to it first and then, and they, they start to return to their favorite places as well as populate that. But again, this is, it's about everybody being on the same playing field, the level playing field. That's the issue here.
That's the issue. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. Okay. I have one question. I'm not certain where this document came from. Sometimes we find things that are presented to us when we get here, and it's not labeled. It says Marion County Environmental Health. It's a mobile food unit plan review. Yes?
Good evening. I'm Glenn Gross, the Community Development Director. That was provided by staff so that you could review what the health department currently requires for sanitation for these, for these mobile food units.
Okay. Do we have a document like this for Polk County? Because West Salem is in Polk County, and I'm wondering if they're going to have the same standards and regulations?
You have, you should have two. You should have one from the state, which provides the state guidelines, and one from Marion County. And those two documents there are very similar. We don't have one from Polk County, but they're going to be very similar to both of those.
Okay. Maybe I just got missed, but this one's just Marion County then. Okay. Yeah, do you have?
This is the second page. We'll start. But we're...
Okay. Well, these are all just, this is just numbered, pages one through 11, so I just assumed it was all from Marion County, but you're saying it's a combination?
So, there's one, so this is the Oregon Health Authority packet, and that's going to be in the additions.
Oh, thank you. In the additions. Okay. All right. I'll find it. Thanks. All right. Sorry to make you wait so long, Dino. I apologize for calling you up as early as I did. Dino Venti, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you, Mayor. Counsel.
Is there a need for mobile units in Salem? Probably, right? Whether they're food carts or food trucks, I'll leave that up to the experts, right? The sanitation thing, I'll leave that up to the experts, right? But I'm here to also, you know, inform you guys that it's unfair competition for brick and mortar. So, as you look at revising this code and adapting it, right, keep it away from brick and mortar. It's unfair. I mean, it's basic business. When I sell my food, I have to pay the cost of starting up my business. And I mean, I'd like, and I take that plate cost down as low as I can go, right, so I can afford to pay, to offer an affordable meal to the public, right? You get a food cart coming in with minimal startup costs compared to brick and mortar, right there, it's an unfair advantage, period, right? So, I vehemently oppose it anywhere near downtown or the Capitol. I've been downtown for 18 years, in the trenches, trying to make downtown a more vital, interesting, dynamic place. And if this imposed upon any of that, right, in the downtown core or that state building, it's an unfair advantage to any of those businesses that have sprung up in the last several years. Amadeus, Coin Jam, all of them. I can't speak for them. I love that they're happening, right? I, I'm up to the challenge of competition, as long as it's fair competition. I couldn't be more excited about the restaurants seen downtown. And I, I hope that I see more restaurants open downtown, in vacant buildings, right? That's what we need. We don't need a pod downtown. We need restaurants moving into these vacant buildings. We need, you know, toolbox money that's available for these aspiring restaurateurs to move into the brick and mortar, to contribute jobs. You know, I employ almost 70 people now. I started in Salem. I started myself. I was my only employee and had been for years, right? I was in the incubator of the Reed Opera House for 12 years, right? That's the road and the path to sustainability, to a thriving community, to job creation, right? To people that are invested in the downtown area. You know, during the busy season, I'd hate to see these pods come in and suck up all the business during spring and summer, and then disappear during the winter when we're still here paying our bills. You know, so to counsel, I really, you know, is there a need for these in town? Probably, but not to compete with brick and mortar, right? Let them be out there in the industrial areas where there is that need, where there isn't brick and mortar, where the people haven't mortgaged their houses and put their lives on the line, right? And let these food carts come in. And I'm not saying that these food carts haven't made investments either, right? They have, and some of them maybe have put it all on the line in these food carts. But, you know, when the numbers all add up, it's got to be a fair playing field, you know? And to let those food carts compete with brick and mortar creates an unfair advantage, you know? I'm for the diversity.
Okay. Thank you very much. I think we have some counselors with questions. I saw Counselor Dickey's hand up and Counselor Benars.
Thanks for coming down. One question I thought of is, you talked about, you know, the competition that they would bring and they're not having to pay, you know, the same kinds of, it's not the same kind of investment as you have in brick and mortar. And it occurs to me that Riverfront Park has really, we're continuing to see more and more festivals and fairs and things like that, which bring in mobile food vendors that are going, I mean, they're, they may be there for three days, but then they go on to another place. And I'm just curious, with our Wednesday market and with all the events that come and go from Riverfront Park, does that detract from the restaurant business downtown?
That's truly a mobile existence, right? They're there, they're gone. What we're talking about here is really graying that area between what's mobile and what's semi-permanent, you know? And yeah, it draws a little bit from my business, and it's really a case-by-case basis, to be honest with you. Some of these events at the waterfront, we'll see a slow day, some of them we'll see busy days, you know? But again, those carts coming in and out of there are truly mobile units.
All right. Counselor Benars and then Counselor Clem.
Under a little bit of research that I did earlier today, I happened to go upon Boise, Idaho's regulation in reference to food pods. They don't allow it in their central business district. And I'm not exactly sure of the boundary of, maybe Union on the north, and I have no idea on the south, Mission or something, the river and maybe Winter. Would you be acceptable if it wasn't in the central business, mobile units were not allowed within the central business district?
It's about competing with brick and mortar. I mean, so for me, where my brick and mortar, where my business relies on its customers to come from are the state buildings and the people who work downtown, you know? With the parking situation downtown, it's hard for me to get that outside traffic coming in anyways, right? So, anything on the state, anything 12th Street to Front Street, you know, out to Hoyt to, you know, Salem Parkway is probably where I'm drawn from, you know? But again, I mean, I would, I would, you know, not only protect in the core, but think about brick and mortar. Think about those restaurants that are out there occupying these buildings, right? Making that investment, providing those jobs. I guarantee you, brick and mortar per square foot will create more jobs than a mobile unit.
I appreciate your point of view. I'm just trying to figure out if there's a happy medium in between overregulating it so, well, I don't want it from I-5 to, you know, to the, to Jefferson and so forth. We have some compromise in between. I'm saying...
Well, take a look at what's going on, brick and mortar, in the areas that you're thinking about doing that.
Let me finish. So, I'm just trying to figure out how we can allow them in the community and still, it's going to hurt. It's going to take some, cannibalize some of the business someplace in the community. I'm just trying to figure out a happy medium in between the two.
So, well...
Do you have another suggestion as to where?
Well, I'm not, I don't know what the zoning is and, you know, I don't know where all the restaurants are in Salem either. So, I mean, when you guys, when they, these pods are, you know, proposed or these spaces are proposed, really take your time and look at what exists around there, and, you know, really make sure that, you know, that brick and mortar there is, you know, insulated from that. Because, I mean, we want, you know, occupancy, don't we? That's what we want in this town, occupancy, not mobile, you know? I'm not saying I'm against mobile and we don't completely want it, but if we have full occupancy, then maybe there's, you know, a little bit more need for a more flexible mobile existence. But until that occupancy's, you know, at that critical mass, we're really putting the cart in front of the horse.
I really did have a second question, if I may. You have some fantastic food. I eat at your restaurants, both of them, all the time. Have you considered doing a mobile unit?
I've thought, I've thought about possibly doing a food truck and doing it in a mobile fashion for, you know, a fair, fairs and carnivals and, you know, places where, you know, festivals. Yeah, kind of like they're doing at the Waterfront Park.
So, but that would not be your core income, but I'm just, there's two sides to the coin. And I'm trying to figure out if you did that, you know, now you're venturing on that other side of the coin that says eh...
I would rather invest my time and resources occupying another building.
Okay. Thank you, Dino.
You're welcome.
Okay. Counselor Clem.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. My question has been asked. Thank you, Counselor Benars.
Oh, all right.
If I just could make a comment.
Yes.
It's, I think the whole community appreciates a lot of the contributions that I know your firm and other brick and mortar firms make to the nonprofits and a lot of the fundraisers that benefit community members, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Thanks, Mayor.
All right. No other questions from counselors? Thank you. All right. We'll move along. Richard Foote, followed by Min Yin, I believe. I'm not saying it correctly, so.
Can you give me that? Hi. Put my hand for me.
Oh. Min Nguyen, thank you. Mr. Foote, welcome.
Hi. Good to see you again. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Richard Foote. I live at 4915 Swegel in Salem, and also have two businesses downtown where I struggle with parking like my predecessor. Two things real quickly. The state sets the rules on how mobile inspections are done. Oops. Hold on, got to back up here. Back up. Wait. Thank you. One more pause. Okay. Thank you. So, they say brick and mortar gets a number. Everybody else gets the same inspection, the same quality, the same write-ups, but there's no number, it's not published. Frankly, that's something that we want to take on so that we're, frankly, the public can have an informed consent on a level, sorry, a level playing field. So, just to set that straight. And the rules are set by the state. Each county enforces them. Polk and Marion are very good. I get inspected by both. Other counties may not be as good as ours. So, that's all I want to say about that. You have in front of you, distributed by me, a set of comments on the Stateman Journal article that happened on Facebook. There were somewhere in the neighborhood of 497 likes. There were 42, I believe, comments that are attached, and that's just printed out for gratification. I'm not going to go through all that kind of stuff. You hear a lot from me at these things every time, beating my drum. So, I just wanted to show you some pictures today. Okay? So, food trucks have been around Oregon, this is from the Oregon Historical Society for a long, long time. We're not talking about anything new, okay? Really, we're not, okay? And furthermore, this is Salem, 1930 harvest time, when the chow wagon would roll out to the fields and cook for everybody. So, again, nothing new. However, the technology has changed a good bit. This is a new food truck being built. Most of them, if you look at any of the folks that are here, have a truck. You go look at theirs, even if they've been in business for a while, you'll see like, they're like that. This truck, this picture's off the internet, not anybody locally. A lot of people were in a very small space. I think Ray hit 110 degrees in their environment the other day. This is not an easy life, so just want you to know that. But here's some of the kinds of things that can happen. This is a group of mobile trucks in the downtown city comparable to ours that bring people down. If you look, what do we see? We see people. We see community. This is, this is a football field, a public stadium. Community, talking, people working together, eating together, sharing with each other. This is another downtown area, a bunch of trucks down. There's a musician over on the side, and they're doing the mobile thing. They show up, they create a lot of stuff, and off they go. And these are all local businesses that you can help by changing this rule. This is a little bit larger down in Fullerton, California. There's a variety of pods as well as smaller things as well. Let's talk about pods a little bit. You know, there's, Inbay Drive Down by Voodoo Donuts in Portland knows that it's kind of problematic, kind of sketchy neighborhood, but this is, I believe, the 22nd Street Cart. You'll see code, this is concrete, there's waste disposal, there's propane, there's recycle baskets, there's families out enjoying the day. This is one in Bend that just was put in in 2013. They have a central area there. Sorry about the quality of the pictures, but there are four or five trucks. They did theirs on gravel, it's ADA compliant access, and they use a honey bucket system to come along, collect waste and all that sort of thing.
Excuse me, I'm gonna have to draw your attention to the red light there.
And I'm done. Thank you.
Well timed. Are there questions for Mr. Foote? Oh, see none. All right, thank you very much. Appreciate your testimony. All right, Min Yin?
Nguyen.
Nguyen. And followed by Ann Johnson.
Hi, my name's Min Nguyen. I live at 6900 Fruitland Road Southeast. My wife and I opened up a food truck, the Fusion Food Truck, in October last year, and we invested our, pretty much our whole life savings into it, and we work it every day of the year, winter, summer, spring, fall. So, we're not here and gone the next day. We plan on sticking around and serving the community and paying our taxes and doing what we have to do, but this is what we have ventured into. This is our investment. This is our whole life investment that we're doing. So, as for being competition or taking business away from restaurant, we don't believe we do that, because we believe that people who's gonna come and eat out of a food truck, they're gonna come and eat out of food truck. If they wanna go to a restaurant and eat and sit down, they're gonna go and do that. So, as for taking away business from restaurant, I don't believe we do that, because people's gonna make their own choices of where they're gonna go and eat. That's pretty much all I have to say.
Okay. Well, we appreciate your testimony. I think there's some questions. Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Nguyen, for coming in. You've been here previously and talked about moving after the six-month and having people have trouble finding you. My question is, is when you moved, do you move to where someone else was already? Because I'm assuming when you have a place, people know there's at least somebody in the place, so is there a lot of just cross-moving through the system?
Yeah, we are different from everybody else. We move every day. We don't, we're not like at six months, but we have a schedule of where we're at every day throughout Salem. And sometimes we move twice a day, because we do lunch at an industrial area, and then we go to like tap houses and stuff and serve dinner.
Okay. So are you less than the two hours at locations then?
Um, no, we require more than two hours, because we cook everything fresh. We have an inspected kitchen, we have, we're licensed and everything. But, like I said, sometimes we move twice, three times a day.
Okay. Thank you much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other questions by counselors? Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate you coming and your testimony.
Thank you.
Ann Johnson, followed by Jim Lewis.
Good evening, welcome.
My name is Ann Johnson. I'm a part of downtown. I've been there for about eight years. I am a retailer. My business is a French unicorn, and I'm a restaurateur. I have a restaurant, Napoleon's Creperie and Gelateria. I was also in the Reed Opera House with Dino in the incubator, and where I had Napoleon's, I had 28 employees. And I am now setting up my new location across the street in a smaller restaurant where I can get to be the guy who does the dishes more often. So, anyway, I think, I apologize for not having a real grip on what exactly where the location of these pods would be. I'm thinking of it as a perspective, as one that lives downtown. My husband and myself both have really invested in trying to maintain the vitality and really bring a lot of life down to a beautiful, wonderful historic district. The challenges I see, I mean, in terms of specifics from a business owner who finds it very difficult the last number of years to compete in an environment, an economic environment that is not an easy one. There have been many changes in the downtown. The EID monies are no longer available to us for improvements by our choice, but for a number of people that voted against it. I know I pay a parking tax for each of my spaces in order to, and that money goes to somewhere. I know that I have a, thank God, thank you Salem Police for the coverage you do on your bicycle patrols. You have saved me many a time where I've had a real row in one of my, in my restaurant or retail, and your services have been very much appreciated. It's now my understanding, your hours have been cut significantly down to Monday through Thursday, maybe, that's my understanding, I may be incorrect, but, and down to a very limited number in terms of supervising the different activities that go on downtown. It's an unusual spot. It's a unique spot for a lot of activity that maybe it can't be found in other parts of the city. The challenges of the parking for anybody who tries to go downtown, is there anyone in this room is about, gee, I'm going to run downtown, I'm going to park for 15 minutes, and then you'll go, well, meanwhile, you've gone around the block 20 times, there's no spot. And unfortunately, I hope that this gets resolved, and I, my understanding that you guys are working on it, so I'm thrilled about that. But that's a challenge, and it's, it's something that'd be wonderful, it was perfect, but it's hard enough for the people that are there that have made a big investment in being there to be able to accommodate their customers.
Excuse me, I do have to draw your attention.
Oh, my gosh, I've got the red light. Okay, well.
You do. Okay. Thank you very much. We appreciate your testimony.
Okay, thank you.
I think Counselor Clem has a question.
Yes, Ms. Johnson, could you comment on whether the city council should consider allowing mobile food carts?
Well, my feeling on that is, I, you know, I know I'm impacted by Wednesday market. My restaurant was impacted, I'm anticipating it will be again. My retail, it's kind of a different, you know, different animal, and it's a different approach, but I think definitely that the food pods would be very significant. Things, when I hear this tonight, what other people have talked about with the rule on water discharge, I know that in setting up this new restaurant, that I have to have a grease trap on my floor drains and on my hand sinks, in addition to my prep sinks and my triple sinks and those items. That's not an easy thing to do. It's also an expensive thing to do. I understand, I'm willing to take what's expected of me. Another example is the use of hand sinks and what the function of that is. I, one thing I observed in the mobile carts, I saw the hand sink where I was always, I know that I have four hand sinks in my location, because I have to have them close and visible. Well, I go to the food carts and I say, where's your hand sink? I'm kinda, where are the hand sinks? Well, they have a setup for the hand sinks that are half a block down the road, and I'm thinking, well, and they just handled money and then they go to get the food. I'm thinking, well, that doesn't seem fair. It seems like there's, you know, if our concern is for the safety and the well-being of the customers, which of course that's very important to us, then to me, we gotta play by the same rules. And so that, along with just the whole, you know, right now, my feeling with, as far as it goes downtown, the number of restaurants, there's so many new restaurants opening up downtown. It's so wonderful to see this influx, and every person's cuisine is different. So in terms of competition, yes, some people will want Linda's Gelato, or they'll want, you know, whatever we do, but if they wanna do something else, they'll go down the street and get it. So there's those choices. If there were five gelato places right next door to us, then yeah, that would impact us. So I think we, by just seeing what's in an area as we set up a business, we try to find our niche in the place that people want to go to. So that's kind of my feeling, and I apologize if I'm making assumptions that are not grounded in fact on these things, but in terms of what's in store for us if this should pass. But anyway.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Appreciate your testimony. Thanks for coming down. Jim Lewis, followed by Carmen Nguyen.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and city counselors. Jim Lewis, I'm here tonight representing the Salem Association of Realtors, and our address is 2794 12th Street Southeast. Let me get right to the connection. About nine years ago, the Salem Realtors spun off a nonprofit organization called Salem Association of Realtors Community Fund. And over those nine years, we've been doing different things to charge and generate income for the purpose of giving back grants to the City of Salem most needy. We've been successful in doing that to the tune of $90,000. We have done some things like our expect, the Unexpected Talent Show that the Realtors volunteered to do. We've had vacation raffles, especially during the year where there was nobody going on vacation. And we've had what we refer to as a mother of all garage sales. In January of this year, sailors, Realtors decided to buy a food cart. We heard that it was a good business, it'd supplement your income and have good food. And again, driven for the purpose of generating the fund so we can give those backs in the form of grants. We found the application process quite laborious, and when we got to the point of the six-month time requirement, that really caused us concern and still does. We've heard in testimony before, not necessarily tonight, but in other public hearings, that you just get settled in, and it's true, we are now a living example of that. You just get settled in, you get your clientele to the point where you're starting to build up and making some money, and you have to move. So I encourage you to move the issue and approve Agenda Item 4A. I want to spend a moment too, and thank the city council for your leadership on this issue. When this first was brought up, the staff mentioned in a report that it would take six to nine months to bring back the information that you've gotten in six weeks. I appreciate the leadership. I don't know if there's gonna be any decision that you make that doesn't have some ramifications. We've heard tonight that food carts are something that Salem is, can utilize, and so I encourage you to move forward with the staff recommendation, and quite frankly, I have enough faith in Salem that if things don't go properly, and these food carts are not run properly, that they will be dealt with, and rather have the opportunity to have the diversity and bring more vitality to Salem than to not have it at all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I believe there are some questions. Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks, Mr. Lewis. Question, are you speaking on behalf of Salem Association of Realtors or on your own behalf right now?
On the behalf of the Salem Association of Realtors Community Fund.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other questions from counselors? No, all right. Thank you very much. We appreciate your testimony. All right, Carmen Nguyen, followed by Jennifer Moretz. Welcome.
Hi, my name's Carmen Nguyen. I live at 8684 Jackson-
Excuse me, can you speak a little closer there? There you go. You can pull it down and get it close to you.
Well, I could, but it's a-
There you go.
Go too far.
Try that.
My name's Carmen Nguyen. I live at 8684 Jackson Hill Road Southeast, 27306. Bear with me, I'm not quite as articulate as everybody else who's already spoken this evening. There's been a few points that I've noticed that sound more like people who are frightened rather than actual arguments to their cause. Everybody is putting everything they have into any business. Just because we don't have the money to try and do a brick and mortar like everybody else did, doesn't mean it's not everything we have, doesn't mean we're not as passionate, and doesn't mean we have higher aspirations. We may want to someday move into a brick and mortar, but right now, what we have is a truck. I don't think that we take anything away from anybody else. There's competition in everything that everybody does. If we moved into a brick and mortar next to a restaurant, we're gonna be competition because we have good food. I think we're less competition as a truck, because unlike being able to go in and sit down and relax, if the people want to eat our food, they have to stand out there in the sun, sometimes the rain. We give them umbrellas to hold, you know, which in Oregon, we all know that doesn't always help. But they have to really want to come to us. They can't just say, oh, it's gross outside, let's just, you know, go someplace else. If they want to go sit down, they're gonna go to a restaurant. If I want pizza, I'm gonna go get pizza, you know? People are gonna go for what they want. If there's a pod downtown or anywhere, it's not necessarily gonna take away from brick and mortar in the long run. Anything new is gonna take away. It's just the fact of things. But it can bring vitality down to the area that it is. There's brick and mortars everywhere, so staying away from them is impossible, but it can bring people in. Somebody's gonna park, they're gonna get food, they're not gonna have a place to sit, they're gonna walk around, they're gonna check out the shops, they're gonna look at a restaurant and go, we should come here for dinner sometime. You know, they're not just gonna dismiss everything downtown just because there's a truck to eat at. You know, we put everything in there, we get inspected probably more than any restaurant. We've been inspected, I think, four times this year because of events, you know? So we always have inspectors going through our track. We have a very clean track. We follow our rules. So cleanliness, I don't think is an option. We wash our hands, we have our triple sinks, you know? So I don't think that anything but fear is really powering the restaurant's argument towards not having trucks be able to have their own businesses and roll a little bit easier and not have to move every two seconds to go someplace else.
Thank you. Are there questions from counselors? Counselor Clem.
Hi, thanks for coming down and your comments. Does your food truck currently receive an environmental health inspection from the county?
We've been inspected by Marion and Polk.
So Polk County has inspected your truck when it's obvious?
Yeah, we went to Independence.
Yeah, okay. And so, do they inspect grease traps and fire systems and hand washing?
Yeah, they check everything. They check our temperatures, they make sure we're labeling, they check where we're washing our hands, if we have everything adequately in reach. They check us, just like they would check anyone else, I would think. They ask us what we do with stuff and, you know, how often we change things, and one of them checked our light covers, you know? So, I don't know if they check in restaurants, but they check us pretty thoroughly.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We appreciate you coming down. Thanks very much. Jennifer Moretz, followed by Lynn Pope.
Hi, thank you for having me and allowing me to speak. My name is Jennifer Moretz. I'm with Best Little Roadhouse down on Commercial Street. I am not going to say that if I am opposed or against or for these food trucks. The only thing that I ask is that, as a restaurant owners, we go through several things to make sure that we can have a restaurant. We go through the grease trap inspections, the fire marshal comes through and inspects, the health inspector comes through and inspects. We have to have so many parking spaces for the ADA. We have to have certain ramps into our restaurant to make sure that disabled people can come in. I'm not saying that it's an easy thing, because it's not, but all that we're asking is that the food trucks have to go through the same things and be as sanitary and as capable of being accessible to the City of Salem. I think if this is done right, it can be very exciting for the City of Salem, but if it's done wrong, it can be something dirty, it can be something where, hey, where do I go with the bathroom? You know, those things do need to be addressed. If they do a pod, where is the public hand washing sink going to be? Where are the bathrooms going to be? How are the disabled going to be able to come into that food truck safely? Those are the questions that I think a lot of the restaurants are like, hey, this is what we do. You want to serve food, come join our team and figure out what it is that we do also, and you have to comply by the same rules. And I think that's what a lot of the restaurant owners are nervous about, is that we spend a lot of money to run a restaurant every single day, and if a food cart can come, and I'm not saying it's easy, because everybody works really hard in the restaurant business, it's not a nightmare and not a dream at any point in time. But, you know, we just want to make sure that it's a fair and level playing ground for everybody, including the brick and mortar and the food truck people. Just trying to make a happy marriage.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there questions from any of the counselors? Counselor Benars.
Just real quick, Nguyen. So you have, and by the way, thank you, I had, was it Prime of Chili today?
Aw, thanks, Ford.
So I do get around to one restaurant or another. I'm curious about the licensing portion. You must pay a fair chunk, I'm not talking about county, because we don't deal with that, it's not our area, but to the city. You have a license with the city to operate your business?
Well, it depends on what you're doing. If you have an OLCC permit, we pay the city for our OLCC permit, we pay $35 for that. We have the health inspection, which is Marion or Polk County, but to become operable, we have all kinds of permits that, we have our fire inspection, you know, our fire permit, our, yeah, all kinds of different permits that we pay the city.
From what I saw in the city, though, the staff report showed that those same fees that you're paying, the carts would have to pay for fire suppression and all the rest, the same numbers, there's no difference.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think the last speaker said it very well, that a lot of, especially brick and mortar restaurants, are just concerned, and we are scared. I mean, we work really hard, we all work really hard again. We just want to make sure that what we have to do is what they have to do. And that's all I encourage the city council, is to look at what restaurants do and make sure that they have to comply by the same things that we have to comply by.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Lynn Pope, followed by Tom Anderson.
Thank you.
If you'll state your name and your address or your ward, and then I think you've heard the two minutes and three minutes, and, okay, good.
Well, this is pretty short and sweet, just a little bit different perspective. My name is Lynn Pope, and I live at 4915 Swegel.
Can you speak more into the microphone?
I'd rather not.
I know.
Really?
It's okay.
Really?
Take a big breath.
Madam Mayor, counselors, thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts on regulations that currently favor certain business models at the expense of others. In April of this year, my partner and I opened our small crepe cafe in the Reed Opera House. According to an article in the Statesman Journal, another crepe business will be opening across the street. According to their signage, they have different, they have a different business model than business model than we have. Dinner service, larger menu, and alcoholic beverages, for example. Just because they operate their business differently and have different cost basis for their operations, I am not coming to the city asking for protection via codes and regulations. In the same manner, I ask that you update the mobile food unit regulations and let the public decide how to spend their dining dollars.
Thank you. And questions by councilors? All right, thanks very much. We appreciate your testimony. Thanks for coming down. Mr. Anderson, welcome.
Thank you. I'm Tom Anderson. I live in Ward Two. I'm here to offer support for the ordinance before the council today. One of the secondary planks in my platform in my recent run for city council was support for food ordinances, food cart ordinances changed like this here before the council tonight. I visited between six and 700 houses, you sort of lose count when you get up that high, and except for nearly unanimous opposition to the Third Bridge, the number one thing that, that people were, had opinions about were the food carts. And every time people saw that in my literature, or every time we talked about it, they were all completely against the current ordinance and were very favorable of some new type of ordinance. So that's what I can tell you from the person on the street. I think that what's going to happen with, if you pass this ordinance, is that you will have more people eating out. You will have more people, it won't be taking away from the people who eat at restaurants, it will be expanding. And I think the pictures that we're showing of what is generated around food carts is a prime example of that. You don't just go into someplace and stay there. You're out in the public, other people come. It creates its own synergy. So think of what, if you pass this ordinance, think of what Mirror Pond would look like with food carts there. Think of what the Sculpture Garden by the Convention Center would look like with food carts there and with people surrounding both those things. Think of what Riverfront Park would look. Think what various other private lots around the city would look like with food carts there and with the attendant people that are there and the attendant energy that would come with that. And then think about what they look like now. So I urge you to pass the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there questions from councilors? Okay, thank you. Appreciate your testimony. All right. Josh Parker followed by, is it Neva Gantz? I probably really said that wrong, but welcome. Mr. Parker?
Yes, my name's Josh Parker. I live at 1070 Crescent Drive. First of all, I wanted to bring up the food cart business is not easy. It's a pain. It's very difficult, actually. So if you ask any food cart owner, they'd rather probably have a brick and mortar because it's a lot simpler. The work involved in a mobile food cart is crazy. I have both. I have over the years. So there are advantages to both of them. There's advantages to food carts, advantages to brick and mortar businesses. I mean, I'm not complaining about brick and mortar advantages as opposed to food cart advantages. The health aspect. So I have a three compartment sink in one of my trailers. Otherwise, I couldn't wash my dishes there, and I'd have to go back every four hours. I have to have that in order to operate properly. I also have to have a hand sink. If I had a fryer, I'd have to have fire suppression and a hood system inside my trailer, my mobile food unit. Otherwise, I'd be shut down by the Marion County Health Department and other fire marshal, we call that as well. I love Dino's Food. He started really small. He said one man show downtown, and now he's 70 employees. Amazing. I guarantee you that any food cart operator would look to him and say, that's where I want to be someday. I want to have my own thing. I want to have a big thing. I want to, I want to grow. I want to really get into the community more. So anyway, great respect for Dino, what he's done, and he's, I mean, amazing stuff. So anyway, that's, I just urge everybody to pass it. I mean, it makes sense. So, thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your testimony. Are there any questions from councilors? All right, thanks for coming. We appreciate that. All right. Is it Neva Gantz?
It is Triva Gantz with Gambaretti's Italian Restaurant, 325 High Street. Thank you for having me here. I love food trucks, but I also think that there's a place for them. Downtown and with a competition against what I have built, not scared. I love the competition. We have some wonderful restaurants going in, but we also have had a lot that have failed, and we do have the empty spots for them. The amount of money that I pay in taxes, revenues for my staff, I grew from 13 out on fairgrounds to now down here I have 28 employees. I love the food industry. I'm very, very passionate. Want to see everybody succeed. But if we take jobs from each restaurant and we do these other, where they can go outside or be at the fairs, why do we want to put them where we're going to take from our downtown, we're going to take from me? What am I, if I lose two employees that I have to lay off because I had a decrease in my business, that means that I have to maybe take down my revenue, take down part of how much I am leasing. So these are the parts, or what if I want to grow? So I'm looking at all of this going, I need a play fairing field. Ugh, got nervous there. A playing field. So I need to know that everybody that is going to pay the same taxes, is going to pay the same parking, is going to pay the same license, and then we're going to compete against each other. And we create, then, a great city and where we're at. But when I have somebody that's got a food cart that is over here, and they don't want to use the porta potty, and they're going to go pass my restaurant, now I have to be the potty Nazi. Really not what I'm looking forward to. So it's really important of how we do and pass for everybody. So it's important that we look at all the obstacles and who's paying into what and really keep us fair. You want more? I, really it is. It's a passion. Every single person that is here deserves to be here and to have their business. They have put money. They put their heart, their soul, everything we put into it. But I do ask that we do make it fair. I have seen so many downtown restaurants go under after a year. So if these guys are going in for six months or a year, and then they just take off and go someplace else, why can they not be stationary? Why is it that they're mobile, then? Can we not make them a stationary or some kind of ordinance that makes that fair if they're going to be there for over a year? How do we make that so that, again, what I could say, bathrooms, water, how are we doing all these suages that's going to impact our downtown area? It will impact. You can't have all those pods with all those great people with not somewhere for it to go.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Are there questions from councilors? Counselor Bennett?
Well, first, I really enjoy your restaurant very much. All of the restaurants, I've heard from every restaurant I seem to eat at tonight and how much I enjoy them. The question I've got, I guess, is have you had a chance to actually read the ordinance that's up in front of us tonight? And the reason I ask that is, as you described pods, and I'm thinking of where Gambaretti's is.
Right.
I'm trying to figure out where a pod would locate near you, near Dino Venti, near Best Little Roadhouse. I'm trying to think of where that would be, given the limitations described in the ordinance to pod location.
But with mine, it's not just about me. It is about the neighbor that I know, that we fight together with a restaurant. We really do bond. We help each other. We put, same as all these food trucks, they've put their investment. They've put their life. So I want to protect the downtown.
I'm still thinking about your, kind of your potty Nazi comment and that you were facing, no, what you described really was.
But even downtown.
Yeah.
They go to the parquet.
What I'm asking, I guess what I'm asking you is, if you've read the ordinance, I'm trying to figure out where downtown this pod locates. And if you haven't read the ordinance, I really ask you to, because I don't think it does what you've been told it does by whoever contacted you to come down here tonight. Do you see what I'm saying? I don't think it's been, I don't think it's been clearly described what that ordinance says.
Take a look at any pod and the repercussion of where you're at. And some, some places could be great, and I think we've heard that. But it is taking a look at the environment, where we want to allow it, and again, water.
Yeah.
Potty Nazis, whatever we're doing.
Yeah.
And it doesn't have to just impact me.
No, I understand that.
Yeah.
And I think if you had a chance to spend some time with the ordinance.
I have, just.
I know, just, I'm sure. It's what, 70, whatever. No, I understand, but I think if you look closely at it, it is not nearly as liberal as anyone has described here tonight, nor as likely to result in the kind of competition I've heard described. The one person I've heard describe realistically, from my reading of it, and I'm sure I'll be corrected, was Mr. and Mrs. Nguyen, who don't have to move every two hours out at the edge of town. They actually will be able to set up, do their prep, do their meal, clean up, and move along in a more normal fashion. That's the one. And so I guess the thing I, because I was concerned about Ms. Johnson downtown, I can't figure out where she and Dino would have one near each other downtown as a pod.
I'm not sure yet, but as they were just talking out by the fountain, now if you were to do that, that's going to impact us.
The fountain.
Out by the legislative, you know, where, where.
In a state park?
Yeah, well, I don't, I would hope not. We just had that.
I guess, I guess what I'm saying is, I really ask that if this does go ahead, that you take a close look at what it says, because I think the food cart folks are going to have to, too. This may not do everything everybody thinks it's going to do tonight, and I'm just concerned because I really feel for people being very nervous about their businesses. And I'm, I want to really, I think we need to have a really clear understanding of how this is going to work. And I'm certainly interested in having a second look at this, not in six months and see what happened, who, how did this work? Because I think we really have some real questions as to how this would work.
Good, and I think this is great.
And I certainly come away from your comments with questions, but I can't, I can't find the place, and I'm thinking about it, where exactly they could end up in downtown or in the neighborhood.
And I question that, too.
Okay, well.
What if we don't know, and then all of a sudden we pass, and I turn around, and it's like, oh, my God, they're right there.
There's a, there's a lot of stuff to look at.
It raises questions.
You bet.
Counselor Clem?
Thank you, and I appreciate that line of questioning. If I could just, just make sure, understand, if we come back to it in six months, you may have already let go employees or suffered loss. If we passed it in six months from now, looked at it again.
Maybe, maybe not. I wouldn't know until something would, is to happen. If there was, you know, right now, the competition that I have is helping. It is breeding. And I, like I said, I love the food trucks. I have friends that own them. So it's not that I'm against food trucks. I think they're clean. I think the food is fabulous. But I still want that stationary, if we're a restaurant, we're a restaurant. If you're stationary, you're stationary. You're no longer mobile. So it's that fairness that we're looking at as restaurateurs. You know, it's, yeah, I work side to side. I do a lot of fair events. I do different things. And these guys are great, absolutely. So, but to look at where, again, is it a stationary? Are they now a restaurant? Or are they a mobile cart? I think that is the difference, is what I'm looking at and what I see and why I have questions and feel intimidated or concerned that I want to keep my employees and I want to grow. I want the business to actually continue to, you know, put on 32 employees, put on 36, maybe open the second business like Dino and have 70 employees. That's my goals, is to continue to put into Salem.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate your testimony. Appreciate you taking time to come down. All right, is there anyone else that wanted to testify that isn't on the list? Yes, please come down to the microphone and state your name and address or your ward number. And like everyone else, you'll have three minutes. The amber light comes on at the end of two and the red light at the end of three.
Okay, thank you. My name is Heather Bethel. My husband and I, Ray, we own Fire and Slice Homemade Kitchen. We have a mobile food trailer. I just wanted to, oh, our address is 1923 Canard Street Northwest, Rover West Salem. But we operate over here in, in the South Salem area. I just wanted to let people know some of the things that, it sounds like we're, they might have misinterpreted. In order to have a food trailer or food cart here in the city of Salem, in Marion County, we have, we were subject to much higher standards than other locations. For example, we spent about $7,000 more than any place else. We were required to have a top-of-the-line fire suppression system input. We were required to have tempered windows instead of the regular windows they have. We were required to have a regular commercial exhaust system, regular than what, what they are required in other, any place else. We, we also have a, our own commercial licensed, that's inspected, prep kitchen that we do all our prep work out of. We have the hand sinks, the hand sink in our kitchen, in our mobile kitchen. It's a Class Four. We have the three-bay sink. We have all top-of-the-line commercial ovens, commercial freezer, refrigeration, just like the Wednesday. We're inspected multiple times a year. Our commercial kitchen is inspected. We clean that thing top to bottom every single day, just like the restaurants are supposed to do. We fall under the same exact rules as far as doing that. We have to keep it clean. People can see into our kitchen also, you got to keep that in mind. People can see directly into our kitchen, so we, we keep it a lot cleaner. You can't see into a restaurant kitchen. You can see into ours. And we get amazed at how clean it is, because they expect, they expect, they expect the roach coach, and they're, and they're surprised. So I just want to keep in mind that we are falling under the same standards. We're keeping our places clean. We are employing, we don't have just one or two employees in our trailer. We have at least four, sometimes five. So we're, it's just, my husband and I, we have more employees also. We're employing people also. And just appreciate your consideration, not just for the pods, but for make, not having us to move every six months, because like I said, you just get your clientele started, and then you have to move. And it's tough. We put all our money into it. We've, we have debt, just like restaurant owners do, and we are working, we get about five hours, maybe four and a half hours of sleep every night, seven nights a week. We are working our hearts out. I work a second job, well, I work main job, and then I work these nights. My husband worked seven days a week. I mean, we're just as passionate, so.
Thank you. We appreciate your testimony. Are there questions from councilors? All right, thanks for coming down. Appreciate that. Okay, anyone else? All right. We'll now have time for questions of staff. Let's see, I see Counselor Clem's hand up, and then Counselor Bennett.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And then Counselor Dickey, okay.
Thank you to Counselor Bennett for bringing up this line of questioning. Do we know that there are any or that there are viable sites in the downtown core for pods, given that they must be a hard surface or a parking lot and not a public right of way?
We haven't looked at any specific location to see if a pod would be viable.
Okay, so this fear of pods, particularly if that's the fear of taking away from downtown businesses, we have not assessed whether that's even a reality, that a pod can be downtown?
It could happen under the proposed code, but we haven't looked at any specific site to see where it would go and how that would work.
Okay, so we don't know if pods are coming or not?
Not in the downtown area.
Obviously, other areas where there are large privately owned parking lots, where there's parking requirements are met and so forth and so on under the proposed code, certainly they could set up in those areas.
Correct.
But in the downtown core, we've not made an assessment. How, is that a laborious exercise, or can we, I mean, we have lots and lots of information about downtown, particularly parking, or the lack of free parking, but.
Well, we could certainly do that, Counselor, if the council, if that were the desire of the council, we could do, you know, we have GIS. We could do a block-by-block inventory of what's there and determine if it's hard surface and if it's, you know, if it has the right zoning and if it wouldn't, you know, if it's an existing parking lot that it wouldn't take up the required minimum parking, and we could come back on the report. But we haven't been able to do that. We didn't think to do that, and, but we could do that if that's what the council wants to do.
And if I could ask my last question, are, regardless of where they're at, whether they're in the city of Salem, city limits or outside the city limits, are all currently mobile food truck operators required to go through this inspection and pay this fee to Marion County, regardless of what city code is? So everybody's already.
Depending on the county they're operating in, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Counselor Bennett.
Counselor Clem handled my question.
Oh, I'm sorry. He did, all right. Then we'll move to Counselor Dickey, and then Counselor Benars.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm curious if you know about, so the Wednesday market comes down, and I know that they get a special permit, so it's a little bit different because it's, it's like a special event or something. Do you know, do they, are they required to provide restrooms for their event?
I'm not sure.
Okay, so you're not aware if, or if they do provide restrooms, do you know?
I don't know.
Okay. All right, that, I guess that answers my question, thanks.
Okay, Counselor Benars.
So I'm always a fan of looking at the communities to at least see what they've done to address the same issue. And I was looking at, as I had mentioned earlier today, Boise or Portland, and I really discount Portland because of its size relative, knowing Boise is the state capital of Idaho. I was interested about the central business district. They don't allow it in that location. I would like to have some further write-in, and maybe in the same line as Counselor Clem's conversation about basically how could you, or is there any spot within the downtown core area, which I think goes now from Trade Riverfront up to, I don't know, Market or something, and Winters on the east side. So it's basically the core of downtown. We have a lot of restaurants concentrated, and maybe the issue's moot if we can't find a location that would fit anything like that in the first place. Second thing, I just want you to clarify, if you can at all. What we, as a city, city staff does is look over the zoning and location of these food carts. We are not an inspector, so having three sinks or a separate washing isn't something that we inspect. We don't look for chlorine. We don't look for all those other little things. Is this correct?
It's correct, yeah.
So it's not in our purview to really question those particular issues. Those are a county issue, so we have three commissioners that can answer those questions at one of their meetings. But the real issue here is, is location and licensing and the rest. Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there other questions? Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just in looking at a non-allowable zone, CO. Can you give me an example of an area that would be CO zone, where you could not have a food truck?
I think South Liberty, there are, there's some CO. When you go from like City Hall to where it meets up, beginning with commercial, there's a row of CO where, a commercial office zone, where you'll see offices, currently in the zoning code, a restaurant's not permitted in the CO zone, so we're not proposing to allow mobile food units in a CO zone.
Okay. One other question, if I may?
Certainly.
Licensing fees. I saw what Marion County's charging, $112.50. That's an annual?
It would be an annual fee, yeah. Under the current system, that's a six-month fee. So we're proposing an annual license.
Counselor, are you referring to the county's fees or the city's?
No, county was like $2.77 or something.
Okay, yeah, our, our fees are for, certain businesses and occupations have a business license fee in the city of Salem. Most businesses aren't required to have a business license, but there are some exceptions to that. They include such things as junk dealers, pawnbrokers, street vendors, nightclubs, and mobile food units. And they all have a fee of the same magnitude, and it's about, if you total everything up that comprises the fee, it's about $150 a fee, a license. What we're proposing is, and that's good for six months, so a mobile food unit would have to basically pay twice that for, for one year today. Under our proposal, they would pay that one time for the whole year, so we wouldn't be collecting as much revenue. But our proposal also eliminates a lot of the staff work that's currently, you know, the zoning inspection and so forth. So we think it's kind of a wash.
One question on that. Taxi drivers?
Yes.
They pay the same thing?
They, no, they pay less. They pay about $65 for their licenses.
Okay. All right, yeah, thank you very much.
Counselor Benars.
A follow-up to just thinking about things. We talked a lot about cleanliness of the food facilities, but we have personal hygiene on this whole thing. Where are we, I don't remember seeing it in staff report, but where are we in requiring or not requiring a place to wash hands, use the restroom, and so forth in reference to the recommendations from staff?
There's, there's different requirements for the county based on what kind of unit they're operating. There's different classes of mobile food unit. And the higher you go up for, for risk, like preparing raw meats, you'd have to have certain types of handwashing, sanitizing facilities within the unit.
I'm referring to the patron.
For the patron, the, the state law requires that if, if a mobile food unit is providing a place for somebody to sit, that they need to have a bathroom with a handwashing facility within 500 feet of that location.
Okay, otherwise, they're not required to have it, and that is state law, not cities.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Other counselors, any other questions?
I have a question myself. One of the things that we're talking about is the six-month, being able to stay in one place for six months, as opposed to now they're required to move, how often?
Well, under the current code, there's, there's really two classes of mobile food unit. There's a mobile food unit that would set up in a semi-permanent location. They get a license for a site-specific area, and they have to, they're, they're stuck in that location for a time period of six months. After that time period expires, they have to move to a new site, an unlicensed site, and occupy that site for another six months. In the definition of our mobile food unit, that would apply to units that are there between two hours and six months. If they're there for less than two hours, there's kind of a loophole in the code where there's not a license that's required. There aren't requirements for those units. So that's, that's what you see with the two-hour rule, is people are trying to occupy a site, get in there, get out to the next site. That way, they're not getting individual licenses for multiple sites.
I see. So now we have, in effect, two types of licensing systems. And under this new ordinance, then there would just be one.
It would just be one license for a unit regardless of how long you occupy a site.
And then it would be up to the owner or the manager of the unit to decide whether they're going to be there for two, two hours, or two days, or two months, or?
Correct.
Within the six-month period of time.
No, they can be there for one year, and then they can stay there if they want, just by coming in and getting a new license. There'll be no requirement to move under the proposal.
I see, okay. All right, well, I've really been tussling with this, and I think we'll talk about this during our deliberation time. Counselor Clem, you had your hand up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To my earlier question, Mr. Gross, how, could staff prepare in a two-week timeframe an analysis of the downtown properties?
Yes, I believe so.
Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd asked a question of one of the speakers earlier. When we go out and inspect where these people are going to semi-permanently be for six-month intervals, are people just trading places around town?
So units required to move every six months, and they have to move to a new site. That, that site.
That leaves a vacancy. Do we see those vacancies then filled where the previous?
Well, the, the site that they were on previously is flagged as a site that has to be unoccupied for six months. So they're, they would have to move to a new site that didn't previously have a mobile food unit on.
But say, I just, I just bought a food truck today. That guy just moved three weeks ago. I, I can't put anything there at all, anyone, for a six-month period of time.
Right, right.
Really? Well, that gives. I need some clarification on that. So under our current ordinance, we, in effect, are restricting the property owner from making a decision about the use of their property.
The, the property owner would be allowed to have a mobile food unit on their specific property for a time of six months. After that time lapses, they would have to have it unoccupied before they can invite a unit back to that site.
Oh, that's interesting. All right, okay, thank you. That's another clarifying thing. I'll write that down. Thank you. Any other questions for staff? No, all right, thank you. I'll close the public hearing, and we'll enter, entertain a motion. Let's see, Counselor Dickey, do you have a motion for us?
Yes. I move to adopt proposed engrossed ordinance number 11-14 with the following additional amendment. Amend section four of the ordinance to add 30.410E to state, "Mobile food unit operators shall pick up any paper, cardboard, wood, or plastic containers, wrappers, or any litter which is deposited by any person within 20 feet of the mobile food unit when conducting business," and proceed to second reading.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Dickey and seconded by Counselor Tesler. Counselor Dickey, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I, first, I just want to commend staff for all of their hard work on this. They got it back to us much quicker than can happen sometimes in government time, so I really appreciate that. I also appreciate the, the environmental health packet that was put on our desk so we can actually see what both the state and the county ask of the food trucks. That was very, very helpful, to be able to have a better understanding of what the requirements actually are. I, you know, I think this is the right thing to do, to remove, I mean, we've got government barriers that are keeping these businesses from being able to operate. And I think that, you know, this is only going to enhance our food culture in Salem. I think that, you know, I, I was recently at a business meeting in another city, at a restaurant, and the person was, it was a very successful restaurant, but said, you know, hey, it's our slow season, so what we're actually doing is, we're going to set up a food truck, you know, down the road here. And so people will try a sampling of our food, because knowing they can't offer their full menu, and they will try it, and then they will want to come into our restaurant. You know, I, I hope that our local restaurants may be able to take advantage of that, or, you know, share information between the brick-and-mortar restaurants and the food trucks, and they can promote each other. I think that would be great, to see that kind of vibrancy within our food culture in Salem. So it is my hope that, should this pass, that the brick-and-mortar restaurants would embrace the food trucks, and we would really see a vibrant food culture within our city. It's growing. We have a lot of new restaurants, as we heard tonight, so I think this would just continue to enhance that. I also have spoken with the Health Department inspectors, and they've told me that this ordinance would make their job easier, because, especially because we don't have a business license in Salem. This would make it easier for them to know where the food carts are and be able to inspect them. So I think that that would also help relieve some of the concerns around the cleanliness and safety, which, you know, I have no issue or concerns that that is actually happening, but there could be one that, you know, I guess, could get missed if they don't know where to find them. So this will really help with that. You know, I do believe that this, this isn't Portland, and I know that we've seen and heard about some bad examples in other areas like Portland, where areas where there isn't cleanliness within the groups of food trucks. But I, I believe that we will, I, I believe they will police themselves, and if they don't, I believe that we will be let know. And someone will let the city know. They will be down here at a city council meeting saying, hey, have you seen this area of food trucks? It's not very well-kept, which is also another reason why, to add the, keep your wrappers picked up within 20 feet of your food truck. I think that will help with that as well. And then finally, I'm just going to ask that the council not delay this. If there's more information that's needed, such as finding out where possible pods could go, you know, I think that would be great. I, I would love to have that information back. I would just ask the council not to delay passing this particular ordinance while waiting for that information. We are right in the middle of the busy season for the food trucks, and so their, and their window is pretty short. And so I would ask that if there's more information requested, that we, we do get that, but we don't hold up passing this ordinance because of that.
Thank you very much. Other counselors, comments, questions? Counselor Clem.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm appreciative that Counselor Dickey included in her motion the additional new requirement that is a surprise to maybe those who've, who've taken the time to study the proposed ordinance for the sanitation requirements, because as I've seen some of the food pods in some of the communities, sanitation, particularly litter, is, is a, is a problem, and it's not enforced. And so I hope that, as, I'll, I'm going to support the motion. I do have misgivings and concerns that we realistically understand where pods would threaten downtown businesses. So I would appreciate if staff could bring back that information so that we know as we're going into it, at least, what the potential risks are. And then with some sort of an understanding that, and I won't be here, but six months from now, that, that there'll be a staff report that makes some sort of either general or detailed assessment as to whether or not there are negative impacts, or, and positive impacts, of, of mobile food carts. So I'm going to support the motion with, with reservations that we study it in six months and that we immediately sort of understand, is there a real impact of pods to downtown restaurants who've worked for, as stated, years to build brick and mortar? So Casey's Hot Dogs started out on the sidewalk. Wish he was still there, but he, he had to retire sometime, but. So like chickens, I'm willing to say, let's give it a whirl, but I expect that council will be ready to take a look at it if something doesn't go right.
Counselor Benars, I believe you had your hand up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I, too, am going to support this measure. Actually, Counselor Clem stole my thunder. I was going to talk about, I would really like to see a staff report, not specifically six months, but at some time in the near and middle future where we're looking at the implications, not only to the communities, of where those pods might be located, what it's done to neighborhoods, kind of thing, but also what it's done, hopefully, working with the Oregon Restaurant Association, what it's done to the bricks-and-mortar kind of businesses in this community. I'm not sure if it's the same clientele going to the same thing. I don't know. I'm very nervous. I wrote down here concerns. I have concerns. But I think it's a positive move for this community. It's scary, because it's unknown for us. Frankly, it's unknown to very many communities in the state of Oregon, period. Ben, Portland, us, I mean, there's not too many of them that are doing this kind of thing at this point. So it's something new, but I think, I think I'd like to take a look at it.
Counselor Tesler.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Well, it started with beer, and it's going to end with beer, because Samuel Smith protested the first monopoly with his brewery. And, you know, if you go to a brewery here in Salem, the only place that you have to eat at the brewery usually, unless you go to Gilgamesh, which is a fine place, is a food cart. And if there's no food cart there, there's nothing to eat, because Saniam and Vagabond and a couple of these breweries are located in industrial areas, and there's nothing to eat there at all. So if you want to, you know, have a, a nice dinner, you know, if you have some business people coming to visit you, I don't take people that are doing business with me to a food cart. I take them to Jean Betty's Downtown or another nice restaurant with the tablecloth and those kinds of things. Food carts are for different occasions. Brick-and-mortar restaurants are for those occasions that you want to sit down and have something to eat. I work in a food desert. I work in a food desert. I work in Fairview Industrial. It's a food desert, people. It's a food desert, okay? If you like fast food, if you like pub food, if you like fried food, if you like mediocre food, it's the place for you. I cannot, I cannot get physically from my place of work to downtown within an hour. It's impossible. Parking is impossible downtown to get in and sit down and get something to eat. You're looking at takeout. And for me, I don't have a lot of time at lunch. I need to go somewhere. I need to get something healthy, and I need to return. I, I love my building. I love where I work, but it's a food desert. And there are other people who work in places around Salem, such as the industrial area where the Croc Center is, which is also a food desert. There are places all over the city like that, and you need to have choices. And there, and food carts, as a general rule, usually have healthy food. So I think that having those types of opportunities is great. I never envisioned a food pod downtown. Why would you have a food pod downtown? That niche is full. You would have a food pod in Salem Industrial or somewhere like that. I mean, you wouldn't have a food pod there. So I just, let's just do this, pass it. It's fine. It's going to be okay. You know, if you've ever been to New Orleans, I will throw this example out. If anybody in this room has ever been to New Orleans and been to the French Quarter, there are no restrooms there, okay? I will attest to that. And if you want to use a restroom, there's a two-drink minimum. And that is, that is the truth. I mean, I, I am not lying to you. So I think if you're concerned about cleanliness and that kind of thing, I just. So I think if you're concerned about cleanliness and that kind of thing, I just, that's, that's not, we're not even there yet. So I appreciate everybody coming down here and telling me about how hard it is to have a restaurant because I would never have a restaurant because the first six months will make or break you. But I think we just, let's just step back and let this happen because it's going to happen organically and I think it's good for the city. It's good for the city. We want to have an application where we can get this little application and I can go, oh, they're over there today, or that kind of thing. That's what we need. There are food carts all over the city. I've eaten at just about every one of them. So, and I lived in a foreign country and ate at food carts and I survived. So it's going to be okay. Thank you.
Other comments by councilors? I have a couple of comments myself. I've really gone back and forth in my mind ever since we started looking at the issue of the food carts. And I'm sympathetic to restaurants that are in brick and mortar locations and sympathetic to the struggles that any business is going to have when they have overhead and they've got to balance the costs of doing business in that location. But again, I'm also swayed by the vitality that I think food carts bring to an area and certainly the diversity of the food. And I really see Salem as a center for taste. We have such a great abundance in this county, in the city, in Polk County, Yamhill County area for fresh food and beverages. And I see it as an opportunity perhaps for a greater sense of that with the food carts because food, mobile, mobile food units might be able to feature some more of those items more easily than a restaurant with a set menu. And so I'm optimistic about vitality coming from that. So I'm going to support this motion, but I would like to, and I need some, probably some council guidance here. I would like to see us come back within six months, see staff come back, excuse me, in four months with a staff report as to how it's working, both as to the cleanliness and the appearance of the food carts and if pods develop, just exactly what effect those have had on the areas around them. And then also, the reason I say four months is because I don't want adjacent businesses or residences or any other facility to be impacted by a situation that turns bad. And I think you're going to know in four months whether it's working or not. Just, I don't think you need an extra two months to find out if it's working or not. So do I need to make an amended motion for that?
Madam Mayor, that doesn't need to be part of the motion. I think we've got adequate direction on that and the city manager can confirm that.
Okay, so is council, that sounds all right to councilors, four months instead of six? Just, okay. Councilor Clem and then Councilor Nanke.
It does. It sounds fine to me. I was just hoping to understand, you know, pods can locate downtown. Do we wait six, four months for that or can that be done in a couple of weeks?
We can do that in a couple of weeks.
Okay, yes, I think four months is okay.
Okay, okay. Councilor Nanke.
Yeah, and I was going to go to that same place, just knowing that a lot of times staff can bring things back that don't need to be amended into motions and what have you on the floor. I've kind of gone back and forth. I'm, I can feel the anxiety of the brick and mortar facilities. They have. They put together their business plan based on competition as it was there at the time and they invested a lot of money. The other side of that, I was hoping that people would actually be trading places because that would mean basically there's no net change in the city. But it's actually worse for people who actually have employees who need something to eat if I can have food for my people for six months and then they have to drive somewhere. I used to work in the food desert and at lunch, 300 cars would drive away. Truly awful. That being said, we still have the food trucks that are in Salem here now. They'll stay here. Because of the changes in the rules, I think we will draw some more in. And that's not necessarily a bad thing for people who actually want to start a brick and mortar, don't want to risk hundreds of thousands of dollars if people aren't going to like their food. And that's what a food truck kind of is. It's that incubator. Dino had a very small incubator inside of a brick and mortar, essentially probably the size of a truck. It wasn't very large at all. I'd like to see more competition inside of the city. The fear has always been that we need to have them able to compete on a somewhat equal footing. And that's really hard to do based on, you know, how much money somebody has and, you know, a truck is everything. There's savings and what have you to try to make a living now because potentially they lost their job somewhere else, which a lot of people have done in the last several years. I can't make the determination on where that equity lies, but I know we have to have that competitive element move in. I mean, that's what kind of capitalism's all about as well. I am concerned about the long-term impacts of that and I think it'll be great to see a report come back. And we aren't going to necessarily be able to figure out the cleanliness of the units because we're not going to be inspecting them. But we can see kind of what the business aspects are and I'm really interested to see what the findings are in regards to the central business district. Because there are a lot of folks downtown and we attempt to protect that from a lot of things inside of the community because it is this living thing in the middle. And as soon as a lot of cities downtowns die, it's like boom. So depending on what information comes back, we'll, may have to do some other manipulating here in a couple of weeks. Yeah, I don't know where pods can go and I don't know how that process will evolve and I don't think any of us really do. So hopefully in the food desert.
Any other comments from councilors? All right, I think that we are ready for the determination here. We have a motion on the floor and the motion as amended actually, or do you say amended? Actually was not amended. The motion, which includes the information about the cleanliness of the surrounding areas, is the motion that's on the floor. So although, it's been moved by Councilor Dickey and seconded by Councilor Tesler?
Yep.
Was it, all right, thank you. All right, then we now vote for the motion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, we will take a short break. I appreciate the patience of everyone who is here that still has yet to testify. We apologize. Sometimes these hearings do just take a long time. So we'll take a short break. All right, we will come back into session. We left off in public hearing and we're going to resume public hearings and item 4B. And this is a deliberation only. We take no testimony at this point. And this is a deliberation on a council review of Planning Commission decision for consolidated comprehensive plan change, neighborhood plan change, zone change, conditional use, zoning adjustment, site plan review, case number 14-02, having to do with property at 2630 Church Street Northeast. And I'm going to ask Councilor Dickey if you have a motion for this item. I don't mean to spring that on you as a surprise.
Yes, I'm just waiting to pull it up here. Do we need to, do we deliberate after the motion? Is that right? Okay.
Yeah. We have staff here if you'd like a short staff report.
No.
But otherwise, I think a good move, have a motion, move into deliberation.
We didn't really have a staff presentation to make. We did provide a supplemental staff report based upon the evidence that was received. We certainly would be able to answer questions if you have any. Otherwise, we're, we're fine.
Okay, go ahead. Why don't we proceed and have a motion and then if questions come up during deliberation, we can cover that. Thank you.
Yes, I moved to reverse the Planning Commission decision and denied the application for the consolidated comprehensive plan change, neighborhood zone plan change, zone change, conditional use, zoning adjustment, site plan review, case number 14-02, to allow a room and board facility for property located at 2630 Church Street Northeast.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilor Dickey and seconded by Councilor Tesler. Councilor Dickey, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, thank you. It's been a little bit since we've talked about this or had the staff report. So if you'll recall, we saw this on May 27th, which was about five or six weeks ago. The reasons why I am recommending that we deny the application, I believe that this application for comprehensive plan change to commercial, it fails to meet the applicable criteria in that the proposed commercial designation is not equally or better suited for the property than the existing designation. It's surrounded by residential property and this is, if you recall, a converted care facility, so it really doesn't quite fit the use in the neighborhood. It is definitely an antiquated structure, even though, and so it is in need of a lot of repair. I was kind of, I was struck when we had the public hearing several weeks ago at the amount of disrepair the building was in and the facility was in. And we were unaware of it until just now. And I'm feeling very bad for the residents who've had to live in those conditions. I, no one should have to live in conditions like that. So there are some issues there that haven't been addressed, even though they've been very glaring issues to people who have gone in to provide various inspections and that kind of thing. I also feel that the application fails to comply with goal 10, which is housing, because it reduces multifamily designated property and replaces it with commercially designated property. And I also, I believe the proposal is not in the public interest. If approved, this application will continue, I think, to really be a troublesome property for the neighborhood. One of the things I'm particularly concerned about is being a former care facility, there were really very few parking spaces. I think it was eight, if I'm recalling right. And they're, they're asking to have this be a facility that could house up to 30 people, which means that if you do the math, that would be, if every one of the tenants had a vehicle, that would be 22 cars that would have to go into this residential neighborhood. And it's an older residential neighborhood, so already the streets are a little bit narrow and that could be problematic for the neighborhood. So for those reasons, I am recommending denying this application.
Councilor Bennett.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I was absent for the public hearing, but I've had an opportunity to listen to the public hearing and to review the record on this, so I'll be participating in this evening's vote.
Thank you, all right. And further discussion, yes, Councilor Benars.
So what I expected after the last meeting that we had, that we would get a staff report telling us about what items had been resolved since the public hearing, before the public hearing was closed or at the time that it was. How have we resolved the problems with the tenants that were in the neighborhood? How were the problems resolved about the parking? Did they add the parking to the north side of the property line that has, they had suggested in one of their items in the letter? And have they resolved any of the safety concerns, safety violations within the building, the building codes within the building itself for the tenants?
They still have time under the enforcement order. I think that is later this month to do those corrections. Thus, the compliance staff will be going back out to see what's happened with regard to the safety issues. So that's ongoing. The parking, the applicant represented proposed some additional parking. That's why we did a supplemental staff report was to advise the council that that can work if they also obtain an adjustment or a variance because in order to accommodate that additional parking, they're going to have to reduce some buffer yards.
And the third item was the problem with the tenant, tenants within, that was one of the greatest things, where the problem was either people that were coming in to visit or people that were within the building and how they treated the neighborhood. We had a manager issue and so forth.
Right. I have not heard of any new complaints with respect to tenant behavior in the area, so I can't really speak to that other than say I haven't heard of any, you know, complaints. So presumably they've gotten a handle on that, although I can't say that for sure.
Well, one of the things that concerned me is that, is that it's a lose, this is almost a lose-lose for me. Either the people lose their homes who are low-income, have very little needs in their life but a small room, or, you know, the neighbors lose because they've got to put up with a lot of problems. So those answers to those questions are vital to me to know, did the owner of that property take the bull by the horns and do something? And that was really, I was looking at the attorney for that applicant saying, something has to be done. I want to hear something to be done in that area.
Well, you had an open period to provide additional comments. You got what you got and I can't really add to that.
Thank you.
Councilor Tesler and then Councilor Rogers. Sorry. That's the first time I've done that. That's the first, all right, I've got to read your name plates. I'm sorry. Councilor Tesler.
I won't forget your name, Councilor Rogers.
Thank you, thank you.
So I, you know, this one, this, again, I do struggle with too. But you know what? No one, whether they're low-income or have issues, should have to live in a place like this, okay? And the other thing is, this neighborhood is a neighborhood that has really, really struggled with some heavy issues for a long time. And when I became acquainted with this neighborhood pretty intimately because I used to ride my bike there every day to go to work. And I used to ride through this neighborhood and I really became enamored of this neighborhood because there's people really trying and people taking care of their houses and having pride in ownership and trying to make a difference in their neighborhood and trying to turn it around. And you know what? That's what it takes in a neighborhood, is people to link arms together and invest in their neighborhood. And when you have something like this in your neighborhood, it's bad. You cannot deal with it. It's an absentee landlord. It's a property management company. It's not somebody who's vested in the neighborhood. And this is a problem. So I, I'm going to have to support the counselor from Ward 5 on all her excellent points that she just made, including the one on goal 10, which is another excellent point that we overlooked last time.
Councilor Rogers, you had a comment or a question?
Just a comment. I, I'll support the motion also and certainly I could understand why somebody wouldn't want to improve a property if they didn't know they could do something with it. And that's what the owner could be in that situation. But I didn't feel that during the public testimony. I really felt there was a blame game. And when you read through the report, we were blaming the neighbors for the messy neighbors' homes that they had were not cutting grass or whatever, blaming it on somebody else. I didn't see any responsibility. And I didn't see that in the testimony either. And the follow-up letter that we received from the representing the client didn't really impress me that well either. So I, I just, I was just, I think I was more disappointed about this project. And earlier today, I hope that people that we displace, we have a housing authority, we have vouchers available that I hope that whatever happens here when we move people out, we, we have some empathy toward how fast we move them out and how much support we give them through, if that's through the grant or the voucher program, whatever that is, that we work with them to get them relocated properly, so.
Councilor Dickey.
Thank you. And I should have said when I first spoke that it is not my intention that we just put people out on the street. So, but the conditions in this house would make me very scared for the safety of the residents. And because they had gotten so bad, I mean, no one, a responsible landlord would not let it get to this point before being forced by someone, the government, to take action and make it a safe place for people to live. That being said, I was really surprised by all of the things that we saw that staff had said they had seen over the years, not the months, but years and years of different kinds kinds of disrepair and violations and that kind of thing. And I would ask that, and then we, the first "we" here of it, for the most part, is at a land use public hearing, when we can't even really talk to the people who have concerns about it in the first place, until we get to this point here. And so I would ask that if we have other such properties in this kind of disrepair, where staff is going out for whatever reason, and they are seeing these kinds of violations, we need to know about it before we get to this point. Because if this landlord had not asked for a public hearing because they wanted a variance or whatever, this might still be going on, and we would have no knowledge of it. That is absolutely not okay, and we need to know about these things so we can deal with them. Because as Counselor Rogers just said, we have programs, we have housing vouchers, we have all sorts of things that can help these people. And so we really need to know about this and not let it go on for five years, or seven years, or however long it was. We're talking electrical problems, fire safety issues, all sorts of things, nuisance calls and that kind of thing, and we need to know about it, so we can deal with it, so we aren't having to make other living arrangements for people, but we can work with the landlord and make it a safe place for people to live.
Thank you. Other comments by counselors? Counselor Clem.
Is it appropriate to ask questions now, or are we in deliberation?
No, I believe that we can.
Okay. If I could, Madam-
Because we said we don't have, we didn't start with a staff report, but we would sort of work that in.
Staff is limited in their response. They can't bring new facts in. They can use facts that are existing in the record, but you can't ask questions.
Okay. I think I just want to make a comment, then, that there are correspondence dated June second, June third, attesting to property owners' at least willingness to, so that's in the staff record. I was going to obviously ask, do we know that that stuff's been followed up on, but that would be a new matter of record, so I will withdraw my question.
Okay. All right, a couple of comments that I have. I share Counselor Dickey's concerns and discomfort with the length of time that this facility has been able to operate, for a couple of reasons, and one really speaks to the dignity. People who are in a low-income situation or in transitional housing, I believe, have every right to the dignity of a safe and a secure place to live. And that did not seem that way to me, as we were listening to the testimony, even from residents who were there, who lived there. Their concern was, where would they go? And I think that we are a community that cares, and we're a community with great concern. And I've had a chance to visit a lot of group homes and transitional housing facilities throughout our community, and I know they're not all like this, and there are many, many very good ones. But I think that when we allow a facility like this to continue, what we're saying to everybody else is, it's really okay. So don't keep up those high standards. Don't try. Don't try to provide a really good, safe place for people who are in low-income situations, or people who are in a transitional time of their lives. And I think it's important for a city to hold standards. So I'm going to support the motion for all of those reasons. Other comments by counselors? Counselor Benars.
I really have struggled with this, because as I said earlier, it's a lose-lose. The people lose their housing, or the neighborhood goes to, anyway, further down the tubes. I also am concerned that we'll have another building that will fall derelict, because now there's no income to even do what was not going to be done before, or is even worse at this point, and I have no idea what's going to happen in the subsequent, I'm going to say years, before that something turns that building around and it is brought into the neighborhood like it should, or back, or demolished or whatever, but it's going to be years of blight in that neighborhood, is what I'm very, very concerned about. The problem isn't, and this is, the example in here is a comprehensive zone change. The problem isn't the comprehensive zone change. The problem is the people behind it who are managing it or mismanaging it. And that's where I was looking to see action. A person coming along and saying, I do care, I am going to do something, you've watched me, and that's really what I expected to hear from somebody somewhere along the way from the last meeting. I didn't get that information. So it's a tough one for me to really vote on either side of this, but I think I'm going to support the measure, or the motion as suggested by Counselor Dickey.
Thank you. I will add the comment that I would certainly assume, knowing how our city housing department can work, our housing authority, and the other helping agencies in the community, could certainly help the residents there to quickly find new and, you know, safer, affordable housing. I think that's an important thing that we should be pressing upon the landlord to allow us to help with that, in whatever way, to whatever extent we can. All right. Are we ready for the question? All right. It's been moved by Counselor Dickey and seconded by Counselor Tesler to not affirm the decision of the Planning Commission. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right. We have a third public hearing, and that's for the review of the Historic Landmarks Commission decision. And our city recorder is going to introduce it. I think I'll give people just a moment to transition. I think we have a staff report. Okay, would the city recorder like to introduce this?
The City Council will now hold a public hearing to receive testimony on council review of historic discretionary review case number HIS fourteen oh-nine, a proposal to demolish Howard Hall, former dormitory at the Oregon School for the Blind in a local Salem landmark on property located at seven hundred Church Street Southeast. This will be a new hearing and will result in a decision that supersedes that rendered by the Historic Landmark Commission. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward applicable criteria found in Salem Revised Code two thirty point zero nine zero D two. Testimony may also address any other criteria a person believes applies to the decision. The record of the Historic Landmark Commission action with respect to this request is part of the record before council. Failure to raise an issue in the hearing, in person, or by letter, or failure to provide statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. A similar failure to raise constitutional issues relating to proposed conditions of approval precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court.
Thank you. All right, and we have a staff report. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and counselors. I'm Kimberly Fitzgerald, historic planner for the City of Salem, and I'd like to enter the staff report, its attachments, and all testimony into the record. The issue before the City Council tonight is a de novo quasi-judicial public hearing to consider affirming the Historic Landmark Commission's decision to deny approval to demolish Howard Hall, or to reverse the HLC decision approving the demolition. The designated resource, and therefore the property at issue, is Howard Hall itself, and not the much larger tax lot on which Howard Hall sits. The overall tax lot has not been designated a historic resource. Additional parking has been proposed for the larger site, as well as a request for a tree variance, which is being reviewed under a separate land use process. That application appears as an information report on tonight's council agenda, and while it has been appealed, the City Council does have the opportunity to initiate review of that application independently. Howard Hall was constructed by John Bennis in nineteen twenty-three as a boys' dormitory for the Oregon School for the Blind. It is a one-story brick building notable for the arcades on the facade facing Mission Street, which you can see here on the lower left of the slide. In nineteen fifty-eight, an addition was added on the west end of the structure, which you can see here on the lower right. The dorm was constructed as part of a larger campus for the school, which included nine buildings, of which Howard Hall is the only one remaining. The Salem City Council listed Howard Hall as an individual local landmark in nineteen ninety. I'd also like to correct the record that the hospital acquired the property in two thousand and ten, not two thousand and nine, as stated in the staff report. The owner is proposing to replace Howard Hall with a commemorative garden and adaptive playground, which will honor the site's historic association with the School for the Blind, and serve as a therapy area and playground for children being treated in Salem Hospital's Rehabilitation Center, which is in allowed use in this zone. The corner of Mission and Church will include a brick arch reflective of the Brick Arcade on the south facade of Howard Hall, which we clad with salvaged bricks from the building. The primary entry through the southwest corner will feature a plaza flanked by two walls, which will include images as well as both Braille and text describing the history of the School for the Blind. The applicant submitted for HLC approval for demolition previously in two thousand and eleven, and withdrew their application prior to a final decision being issued. Additionally, it should be noted that since that time, the hospital has had the opportunity to delist Howard Hall from the local landmark inventory, as allowed under Oregon's owner consent law and our local code. Instead, they have chosen to voluntarily go through this public hearing process. On June twelfth, the Landmarks Commission voted to deny the application. While they found the applicant met one criterion relating to whether Howard Hall could reasonably be moved or sold, they found that the hospital did not meet three of the four approval criterion to allow demolition. Specifically, the HLC found that the hospital did not prove that no prudent and reasonable alternative exists to rehabilitate and reuse Howard Hall, because the conditions of the RFP were unreasonable. And therefore, the hospital did not demonstrate that Howard Hall is not capable of generating a reasonable income. The HLC further found that the value to the community of the proposed use does not outweigh the value of retaining the historic resource, and also that the proposed garden and playground lack a guarantee of permanence. The hospital has stated that they don't have a use for this building. While maintenance is required, the city's historic code does not require owners of historic properties to either occupy or use designated resources. However, before approval to demolish can be granted, the owner must demonstrate that a reasonable effort has been made to either move or sell the building, explore adaptive reuse, and show whether or not a reasonable economic return can be expected from the building. They must also show that the proposed new use will have a higher benefit to the community than retaining the resource. These criterion were drafted by the Landmarks Commission and adopted by the City Council in two thousand and ten, to ensure that demolition of historic resources is not taken lightly by property owners, but to also allow an avenue for the city to approve demolition if economic challenges are evident. It is clear that demolition is not speculative, and the reuse will benefit the community. As confirmed by the building official and the Landmarks Commission, the hospital has already demonstrated that Howard Hall cannot be reasonably moved or sold. Staff findings will focus on further analysis of the remaining three criterion. Concerns have been expressed that there are potential uses of the building that haven't yet been explored. At the two thousand and eleven hearing at the Landmarks Commission, similar concerns were expressed, and the Salem Hospital was directed to investigate these further. In response to that direction, the hospital issued an RFP in the summer of two thousand and thirteen. I was personally at the open house they offered on July thirty-first, and unfortunately, nobody came forward who expressed any interest in using the building. There are concerns that the reason this is the case is because the RFP was unreasonable. But in my experience, this is not unusual for this type of property. For example, another RFP which had a similar outcome recently, which included the Dome Building, which is a national landmark on Restore Oregon's Most Endangered List. It's often very, very challenging to find solutions that work for these types of resources. And unfortunately, unlike other commercial and residential historic properties in Salem, we don't have any funds available through our historic program or toolbox to help offset the costs for rehabilitating this kind of resource. Which may have made a difference here, I don't know. In addition to the RFP for adaptive reuse for Howard Hall, the hospital has provided economic analysis relating to the feasibility of two adaptive reuse scenarios as required. They submitted an overview of the cost for rehabilitation and evidence which showed that the monthly rent needed to obtain a reasonable income to justify necessary improvements would be about twice the cost per square foot of what they could hope to recapture in rental income, showing that a reasonable return could not be expected from rehabilitating Howard Hall. Therefore, staff recommends the City Council find the applicant has demonstrated that they have made a reasonable effort to explore the adaptive reuse of this building, and that they have met these two related criterion. Currently, Howard Hall is not accessible to the public, and a security fence is required around the building. The proposed use is to construct an adaptive playground and garden which will both honor the School for the Blind's history, and provide a publicly accessible adaptive playground for children of all abilities, which would be of a higher benefit to the community than retaining Howard Hall in its current state. Based upon concerns expressed about a lack of guarantee of permanence, staff has recommended conditions of approval related to both securing funding for construction and maintenance prior to allowing demolition, and also to ensure that the property will always be used as a commemorative garden and playground. These conditions, if adopted by council as part of this approval, will act as development standards and are enforceable by the city. Staff recommends that the City Council reverse the Landmarks Commission decision and find that the applicant has met the burden of proof required for approval for the demolition of Howard Hall, and approve the application with two conditions. One, requiring the applicant demonstrate that funding for both construction and maintenance are in place prior to granting the demolition; and two, requiring the property to always be used as a commemorative garden and playground by the applicant and any future owners. The City Council may affirm the Landmarks Commission decision to deny approval to demolish Howard Hall, or adopt or modify staff recommendation and reverse the Landmarks Commission decision approving the demolition. This concludes the staff report.
Thank you very much. All right, we have several people signed up to testify. Oh, right, the applicant first. I do want to say we have some people here tonight who are going to be testifying about Howard Hall, who have visual impairments, and so we've made arrangements for that. Sally will hand them a portable microphone, and Peter Fernandez, who is keeping time tonight, is going to also use, in addition to the lights, a bell when one minute is left, and two rings again at the end of three minutes. Okay? That's good. All right. And if anyone has questions, we can stop and go through that. All right.
Yeah, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
If I may, I'd like to move a forty-minute extension. Catch it now, so we don't have to interrupt your flow.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Benars to have a forty-minute extension, so that would be from, until ten thirty?
Ten thirty.
Thirty, is what you're looking at.
Yeah.
Okay, until ten thirty. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, appreciate that. Okay, we start with the applicant, who I believe has testimony, and welcome you. This is Norm Gruber, CEO of Salem Health. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Peterson, members of City Council.
You have fifteen minutes, I'm sorry.
My name is Norman Gruber, President and CEO of Salem Health. My business address is eight ninety Oaks Street Southeast. I don't want to take a lot of your time here tonight. This is City Staff Report accurately lays out why our proposal meets the criteria for demolition of Howard Hall, so I won't go into that. But I do think it is important to revisit some facts about Salem Hospital's overarching mission and its specific vision for Church Street property. Salem Hospital is this community's largest private employer, providing living wage jobs to more than four thousand people. Salem Hospital's voluntary Board of Trustees is primarily composed of longtime Salem residents who are vested in this community. Over the last ten years, our board made major strategic decisions with the very best interest of this community at heart, to maintain our campus as a part of the vital downtown environment, and to expand it to serve the growing needs of our community. As a not-for-profit organization, our focus isn't about paying dividends to shareholders. Our focus every day is on our patients and our mission, which is to improve the health and well-being of the people and communities we serve. That very focus was the impetus behind the vision for the Church Street property development. For the past three years, Salem Hospital employees have reached out to stakeholder groups, asking for input and incorporating that feedback into the plan. In conjunction with integrating their ideas, we discovered a way, not only to fulfill a much-needed void in the community through the inclusive therapy and play area, but to honor the heritage of the site by creating a way to once again serve children with special needs. Additional commemoration planned for the site includes oral histories, use of materials salvaged from Howard Hall, and a courtyard display telling the story of the Oregon School for the Blind in both text and Braille. I recognize this is a difficult decision, and emotions run high. As you consider the facts this evening, I hope we remember the mission of Salem Hospital, improving the health and well-being of the people and communities we serve. This proposed use fulfills the community need, expands the greenway established as a community gathering place, creates a vibrant and active entrance to the downtown, and provides a living memorial to the Oregon School for the Blind. It also has the written support of several neighbors who live along Church Street, directly adjacent to the property. These many advantages outweigh the current value of an old, empty building. Spending precious healthcare dollars rehabilitating a building for which the hospital has no use is not an option. As a community hospital, it's Salem Hospital's obligation to invest those healthcare dollars for healthcare needs. for healthcare needs. This proposal presents the opportunity to spend the dollars on healthcare and gain a healthy community exchange. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your testimony. Are there any questions by counselors? Counselor Tesler.
Thank you. I really appreciate you coming down here tonight. I'm sure you've had a long day. You know, have you seen the conditions, the suggested conditions that we came up?
Yes.
And are you in concurrence with those conditions?
I believe we can meet most all of those conditions.
And can you elaborate on which ones you could not?
I'm going to let that be response by our legal counsel.
Okay, they're going to come up and address that?
Yes.
Okay. That's mainly my question to you. Thank you.
Other questions by counselors? Other comments? All right, thank you very much. Appreciate your testimony. All right, we'll go to the top of the list now. Teri Baxter, followed by Steve Baxter.
They left. Got too long.
Oh, they did? Is there a neighborhood association representative here this evening?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. I'm Kurt Fisher. I'm at 680 Lefale Street, and I'm speaking on behalf of SCAN this evening, as I did before. We hope that you would affirm the decision reached by HLC. We are very impressed with the quality of the discussion and the deliberation and all the very good questions they asked during that process. We certainly felt like David was taking on Goliath. We didn't think we had much of a chance, and we were really, really happy to be proven wrong about that and to see that the process really works. I would ask you to consider the wisdom and the talent and the experience that you have on that commission. I assume that's why you appointed them in that role. Many of them have backgrounds in historic preservation, former city planners, and other people with urban planning backgrounds, and that you would respect their wisdom and expertise in this area. We concur with our findings relating to criteria A, the community value of the resource versus the proposed use. We have similar concerns about the lack of permanence of a playground. We certainly support playgrounds. We certainly think that this playground should be included in this site plan, as I indicated earlier this evening. But if we look at the experience of other playgrounds around the city as we're undergoing maintenance cycle of these facilities, we are concerned that as this facility goes through its first maintenance cycle, that the commitment will not be there to preserve it in its current place. And if you look at the history of the hospital campus to the east of Capitol, on the property where Bush Elementary once stood, there used to be a playground there that was constructed in 1990, and it was the first handicapped accessible playground built in the state. And it was torn down in 2005 along with the rest of the Bush Elementary property and relocated so that they could expand their parking. And it's now, the entire lot is consumed with parking right now. So we are concerned that precedent will repeat itself in the future on this lot. Regarding the economic feasibility of retaining Howard Hall, I entered the site plan that was referred to earlier in the record because I specifically think it offers evidence to this point. The site plan shows Howard Hall in place. If we are to take that site plan at face value, we should assume that that site plan represents an economically feasible use for the property. And Howard Hall is preserved on that site plan, and it does not include an adaptive playground. We also know from the evidence going back from the first purchase of the property that there was no value attributed to the building itself as a condition of the purpose, as a condition of the original purpose, purchase. So they have an asset that they paid essentially nothing for that is certainly worth something, and it's worth something to somebody. We don't know what the potential is for the building specifically, but many of us have high aspirations for the building and have, and see a lot of potential for that site to add vitality and community attractiveness to our neighborhood. On a personal note, I moved here from Montpelier, Vermont. The entire downtown area of that city was built before Howard Hall was constructed, and there are no debates over tearing down any of those buildings. They've been allowed to be repurposed, mature, be repurposed to other uses, add density and vitality to the urban center. And with that, I'll conclude my testimony.
All right, thank you very much. We appreciate your testimony. I see Counselor Bennett has his hand up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I want to disclose that I had a very brief exchange with, email exchange at one point with Mr. Fisher, and he appropriately reminded me we shouldn't be having this exchange. Thank goodness. It was regarding parking, and I didn't understand that there had been an application. I had missed that, so... But it won't affect my outlook on this this evening or on any other issue related to this. I'm just, I'm always taken with Mr. Fisher's thoughts. I always think they're really interesting. So I'm really interested, Kurt, in this, that there is this value attached to Howard Hall, and the lack of an RFP, or lack of a response to an RFP. And generally, when something has value and somebody else is going to see it, and this seemed to be a real opportunity, it appeared, from what I saw and what I've read, that the hospital did a, did an outreach, did their, essentially the kind of outreach that you would expect in this, and nobody responded. It reminded me a lot of the North Campus. I thought that was well-taken, which surprised me in both cases, given the level of discuss... What hap... How do you come to the conclusion, then, that this building has value? I'm really taken with that. As used brick or what? I mean, it has, we know it has some value, but what, I'm thinking of it as a building.
I can name dozens of buildings all around the city.
No, no, this building, this time, with no response to an RFP. I'm trying to, because that's the finding that I'm having the most trouble with, that the Landmarks Commission did. I want to understand.
And I'm responding to your, I'm responding to your underlying point, as I understand it.
I want the straight-up.
Your underlying, your underlying point is that a vacant building, nobody has come, has come forward to rent it, that therefore, the building doesn't have value.
No, that's not at all what I said. An RFP went out. It offered an opportunity for reuse of that building under certain conditions that appeared to me not to be particularly onerous in a, in a normal environment. I'm just trying to understand how we arrive at a value for this building, or does it, in fact, because nobody respond, nobody, not the neighborhood, not the neighbors? I mean, I live in a neighborhood where the neighbors got together and bought a house that was in trouble and fixed it up. Nothing like that happened here, so I'm trying to figure out where the value comes from. Where is it?
First of all, the fact that nobody responded to the RFP, I don't think indicates that the value, that the building doesn't have value. We have many properties that have been vacant all over the city as long as I've been a resident of Salem. They've been actively marketed, people have financial interests in seeing them occupied, and they've been actively advertised, that have, that have much lower standards for occupancy than Howard Hall. So I don't think that is in itself an indication that the building doesn't have value. I think the, that criteria of the code is incredibly subjective, and you can manipulate it into whichever side of the issue that you're on. And we're expressing, and we're asking you to look at the, to follow the wisdom of your HLC and respect the work that they did when examining that criteria and give deference to their expertise.
Huh, okay. I guess I'd give a deference to the market, and the market seemed to just be silent on the value of that building. That's the part that is, where it actually goes to the market, where it could attract value and didn't, is what really throws me.
And I believe I answered that regards to the market for many built, for many other buildings around the city. We've been, we've been in a soft real estate market for a long time.
Yeah.
I mean, and I, and I, and I'll tell you my personal story on the expertise of your planning commission. When we were, when we were in the car, we were listening to OPB, and they were broadcasting from Portland City Club, and they were talking about redevelopment in the Skidmore District. And one of the panelists specifically cited the expertise of Joy Sears and encouraged people down there to go and talk to her and talk to, about the opportunities that are available to repurpose historic properties. They also talked about the importance of redeveloping the empty parking lots down there because they recognized that those are not beneficial for the vitality of the downtown area. And I left with the impression that, that we were, you know, almost hearing from an alternate universe with regards to, they're talking about redeveloping parking lots, we're talking about building new ones.
We're in an alternative universe of some kind, but I think it's around.
All right, are there other questions for Mr. Fisher? All right, thanks very much. Appreciate your testimony. Appreciate you waiting so long. All right, then we'll go on the list. I understand that Teri and Steve Baxter are no longer here, so we will move to Tim Cowan and then Bev Rushing.
Sorry, I'm a little technically challenged. That too.
Yes. Welcome.
Thank you. I've testified before, so I won't spend a lot of time on that, and I'll just focus on this part of it right now.
And you need to state your address or your ward, please, for the record. I know.
My name is Tim Cowan. I live at 3160 Dogwood Street. Did you know that the leading, that accident injury is the leading causes of visual impairment or blind in the United States? The largest group is female primarily because of how long they live and their lifespan. This group, when you go check an SSI, will get $721 a month. So there are possibilities that there could be additional revenue or income for the use of that building. What I might do real quick is just tell you that one of the reasons I was interested in that is I had massive traumatic brain injury. When I came out of my coma, my eyesight was damaged is one issue, and it, it kind of gives you an insight on what it must be like when you have difficulty with your eyesight, and it would be nice to have a place that you could go to, that you could get some help and some reassurance. So I think there's some area there that could be used for. I took these pictures, I'll just go through the series of them real quick. They're going to be a little awkward because I wanted to make sure that when I took a picture, there was no person in the picture. So this is some of the land that's available right now to the hospital to meet some of their requirements. For those of you that frequent the RAM, it's kind of right over there. Now, I attended a seminar at Harvard on negotiating, and I was asked to speak about negotiating to the international audience. The debates right now, it's going quick, isn't it, Delight? Okay. Assumes that one party will win and one party will lose, and that's nothing more than the use of power. Has nothing to do with negotiating. And the most common use of power is indifference. Now, negotiating, negotiating is easy, and one of the things I thought, if you had any questions, I would answer, because in my letter to the editor, I just said that the following, with a following statement, "It will be interesting to discover who's not interested in negotiating, but merely interested in winning." Now, here are some of the pictures that I took. When you negotiate, you need to be prepared to ask the following questions. Who are the parties? What do they want? Why do they want it?
Excuse me, Mr. Count. I'm going to have to draw your attention to the time up.
How much time do I have?
To the time limit, I'm sorry. Can you summarize real quickly?
Okay.
Okay.
What I find intriguing is there's no one in here that knows what the hospital wants, and we're debating about use of that building. We don't know what they want. Now, here's City of Salem, they have 46 parks.
Are you summarizing?
Yes. They have 46 parks. Okay, look.
Okay.
Here's a picture of, and I think this is important. "We would like to see Howard Hall property as well as surrounding properties fully developed into an asset which enhances the current and future health needs of Salem in a growing community." We don't know what surrounding properties mean. Does that mean the park?
Thank you, Mr. Count. I am going to have to say you've got to stop your testimony, but we do appreciate you coming down, and I know that you've given us some slides here, and we appreciate having that as well.
Thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Cowan? Okay, thank you. Thanks very much. Okay, Bev Rushing, followed by Patrick Schwab.
Okay. My name is Bev Rushing. I live at 4730 Auburn Road, Salem, and everyone calls me Bev. Oh, I left out northeast, they say. So anyway, as a small point, I am a former president of the American Council of the Blind of Oregon, and I served three two-year terms in that position, and we have approximately 200 or so student, people here in Oregon. And I am also proud to say that I am a former student at the Oregon Council, Oregon School for the Blind. I'm so used to saying council. And my family lived in southern Oregon, so I was a resident of Howard Hall for a number of years, and I assure you, it's a girl's dorm and not a boy's dorm like the paper said today. Anyway, it was a comfortable, delighted, delightful place to live as a home away from home. And living on campus afforded us the opportunities to learn, to get along with other people, and to fend for ourselves when we needed to, and independence as well as a good education. Anyway, we weren't able to save our school, I'm afraid, but we would love to keep our memories and preserve our beautiful historic Howard Hall. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your testimony and appreciate you waiting so long this evening. I'm sorry it was such a delay for you. Are there any questions from counselors? I don't see any hands raised, so all right. Thank you very much again for your testimony. And let's see, Carleen, no, I'm sorry, I'm backing up. Patrick Schwab is next.
Okay.
Yes? Well- Yes, welcome.
Good evening, late evening. My name is Pat, Patrick Schwab, my address is 4352 Trapper Drive Northeast Salem. I'm the Secretary of the American Council of the Blind of Oregon, Wellamette Chapter. As a group of blind individuals and auxiliary members, the American Council for the Blind of Oregon and its Wellamette Chapter supports Salem's Historic Landmark Commission's decision not to approve Salem Health's application to demolish Howard Hall. The Historic Landmarks Commission did an exhaustive study and their methods follow, followed the exact standards of the city's regulations require. The commission rejected the hospital's application unanimously with one extension. We support the ca, city council's review of the process, but if the commission properly followed the prescribed process, we believe that the council should not reverse the, the work of the commission. The Wellamette Chapter has met with the hospital staff on five occasions to determine if there was a design that would meet criteria A. We asked for changes in the design, they listened, but whenever we tried, tried to get them to discuss preserving all or part of the historic building, they insisted that they, that they would not discuss such a plan. From our perspective, the hospital was unable to come up with a design that would replace the historical significance of Howard Hall. This is also the finding of the Historic Commission. We cert, we carefully looked, looked at the hospital's proposal and felt that the park was not significant in terms of the equipment or the size. The hospital says, says that the square, square footage of the park is 20,000, 20,000 square feet. That, that includes the grass berm's that, that separate the park from, from the neighborhood. Keep in mind that the square, square, that this square footage is only 100 feet by 200 feet. That's the entire park. That, that there, there are seven features or toys in the park. This would be very minimal effort to, very, very minimal effort on the hospital's part to replace, try and replace the significance of Howard Hall. We believe that the hos, that with the hospital's support, that we can find the funding to create a valuable community space for Howard Hall. The, the building is eligible for National Historic Landmark status. If the hospital would allow the application to move forward, we could access grant dollars to restore and preserve the building. Please gi, give us the, the time to develop a better solution for, for Salem and for the blind community and to preserve Salem's historic past. Thank you.
Thank you very much, we appreciate your testimony. Are there questions from councilors? All right, thank you very much. Roger Hauser, followed by Keith Bauer.
Could I wait just to speak in rebuttal? Thank you.
Roger Hauser.
I'm sorry, Roger.
1395 High Street, just a few blocks south from the mayor's residence.
Yes.
I live in historic residence, 1891. And reminder, Howard Hall is a Salem designated historic resource, just like my house. At one time, my residence was condemned, it was going to be torn down. Some local businessmen looked at it and said, "We had to save it." So I'm asking you to save Howard Hall. Just a couple of things I want to mention, I hope I don't upset anybody here. Just a reminder, this is a hospital's unprecedented third try for demolition. In 211, hospital withdrew the application after, repeat after, the HLC voted to deny it. And then of course you had the July vote and here we are today. With all due respects, how many times at the bat do they get which is not allowed for other owners of historic properties like myself? I'm asking you to treat the hospital as the City of Salem does owners of other historic properties. My experience is that when concerns arise, we are told by city officials, one, you bought Two, you got it. Three, you had due diligence, you knew the condition when you bought it. So you'll follow the rules or parent it, partition it, or sell it. In addition, other owners of historic properties are not allowed to fence off properties for demolition by deterioration as the case here for the last four or five years. And at the same time, they say, "Well, it's not accessible to the public, therefore ought to be demolished." I just want to mention a couple of other things here for Congressman Bennett. If you look at the application, if you look at the criteria C, it says the applicant has to make a good faith effort to sell, sell. But the RFP went out for 30 days during a very busy, tired time of the first of the, of the construction period in April, I believe it was. The applicant only offers a lease, not sell. Now think of this, wouldn't be practical for anybody to apply for that, would it? Because if we have to make, if I was a businessman and I had to make the repairs to it, at the end of the lease, who gets a benefit? You understand what I'm saying?
I've done that before, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Excuse me, I'm going to have to draw your attention to, your time is up.
Thank you, ma'am.
Can you, all right, I was going to ask if you wanted to summarize quickly. Are there any questions from councilors? All right, thank you very much, appreciate your testimony. All right, Keith Bauer, did you say you do not want to testify or?
I'm sorry, could I wait and, please speak in rebuttal?
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, then we have Carleen Benson, followed by Gail Warner. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm just going to run through this really fast because I'm hoping I'll get done with it. My name is Carleen Benson, my husband and I live at 545 Leslie Street Southeast, which is just a couple of blocks from the, or a couple houses from the blind school property. We're neighbors in Gady Hill for 20-plus years and we're opposed to the destruction of Howard Hall. We fully support the adaptive playground and we support the retention reuse of Howard Hall. They don't have to be mutually exclusive, but that's the only way the hospital sees it. At a recent meeting with a small group of neighbors to look at the playground plan, Cindy Wagner told us that they had no Plan B for the playground if the hospital, if the building doesn't come down. That made it very clear to me that the playground really has no value to the hospital other than to get Howard Hall out of the way. To the hospital has no value, to their children's rehab program, to their therapist, to the community, to the blind, et cetera. If it was important, they would find another place to put it. There's eight and a half acres there. A city hospital partnership putting it at Pringle would be great. There used to be a play structure there that was widely used by families and children who were visiting at the hospital until it wore out and the city took it down. Ever since, there's just been a big pit. It would also give the hospital a nicer presence at Pringle Park than just the messy smokers' table in the park. The hospital has not and will not consider these ideas and none of this takes into consideration that across the street, the new Crooked House Playground at Bush Park will be handicap accessible. The whole playground idea is just a red herring to get more parking that is not needed because the hospital's already over there allotted number spaces according to the city codes. And with the upcoming merger with OHSU, everything could change. The entire vision and direction of the hospital could change and they could decide that they need that corner for something else. Once Howard Hall is gone, it's gone, there's nothing more we can do. It's gone and they can do what they want with no input from anybody. Several times Cindy Wagner stated that they will not commit to any permanency of the playground. Howard Hall is a perfect historic buffer to historic Gady Hill, Bush Pasture Park and Bush House. Deepwood has no such buffer, look at it. It's instead across from a very ugly, modern medical building and a parking lot. We need to do better to protect our historic resources. Salem's own city plan has a section that requires the city to protect historic resources and that is Salem Area Comprehensive Plan, Chapter 4, M3, which states that identified areas of significant architectural, archaeological, naturally ecological, historic, or scenic value which have been so designated and approved by the appropriate governing body shall be protected for future generations, et cetera, et cetera. So I hope somebody looks that up and can tell me why that's not being implemented. The hospital knew when they bought the property, this building was historic and ever since have put their energies in finding a way to take it down. And Roger just, I think, answered your question. You don't have to go to Europe or back east to see how centuries-old buildings are constantly ready for fit and reused, just look down the street to Wellamette University. Cindy Wagner also said they'd have to do fundraising to pay for the playground, but why can't they do fundraising to pay for Howard Hall? The hospital claims no one has offered any ideas for the use of Howard Hall. At every meeting with neighbors and scan, many ideas have been offered. There was a recent article in May, in the Station Journal, where there are outside people who would like to buy it and do something with it. The hospital is not going to suffer if it's not allowed to destroy community history. It'll go on just fine, but the historic district will be forever impacted and it will trigger a slippery slope of decline. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for your testimony, appreciate you waiting so long. Are there questions from councilors? All right, thank you very much.
Gail Warner, District 4. And good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm here to support the decision made by the Historic Landmarks Commission. I'd also like to ask Mayor Peterson to confer with the city attorney about the need to recuse herself, given her relationship with Salem Hospital, as evidenced by this half, half-page paid advertisement that appeared on April 13th and was one of two that appeared during the campaign primary season. And if, certainly gives the impression, at least to, you know, citizens like me, that she probably should not be voting on an issue that has something to do with the hospital. Will you speak to the city attorney, mayor, and see what he says about this?
I'd be glad to. It also comes to my mind that I sit on a committee that is constituted for the hospital and Capitol Manor for bonding purposes, I may need some help with wording here, but I'm designated on that committee as the mayor. And as far as that ad is concerned, that ad was paid for by Salem Hospital. I was simply one of many people from the community who spoke and was featured in advertising. So would that probably be, preclude me from?
Madam Mayor, we can talk about that in private. If you want to take a recess, we can discuss it.
All right, well, we, we can take a recess. Why don't we do that for a moment? I appreciate you bringing that down, thank you. All right, we'll take a brief recess. I do appreciate that and I appreciate the fact that this lady has brought that ad to our attention and I do want to clarify that it's an ad that was done by the Salem Hospital and I was simply one of other people in the community who spoke in favor of the hospital in that. It had nothing to do with my political campaign and I did not pay for that ad and I also have not received any contribution from Salem Health when I was running for mayor and there's no financial relationship between Salem Health and myself or any member of my family. That being the case, I'm still going to check with the Ethics Commission for a ruling from them, just to be certain on the question of the ad, just for further clarification. Now we also know that the night is growing late and I believe we're going to have a motion from Counselor Bennett to extend this, this hearing. Counselor Bennett?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move we extend this public hearing for two weeks and accept written testimony during that period and can we do that? Are you going to tell me we can't do it?
Correct, you just need, the date certainly would be July 28th.
It'd be two weeks from today.
July 28th.
July 28th. And that we would, I assume, take a public testimony. I don't want to stop somebody from doing public testimony, but we got a half an hour more work to do and we're not staying much longer.
Second.
So to clarify, the applicant, the rest, if anyone else needs to testify, the bill to testify and the applicant will have an opportunity for rebuttal at that point?
Yes. And I don't know, Ms. City Attorney, the question I have, I guess, would be, we have a list of people who have signed up to testify, do we have to reopen that list or can we just finish?
There's no do-overs, if you already testified, you're not allowed to testify again, but folks who haven't had an opportunity to testify will be able to.
Okay, great, thank you. Whether they're here or not, I mean, it's anybody, it's a y'all come again, okay?
Okay. All right, there's a motion on the floor. Yes, Counselor Bernard.
I just want to clarify in the 120-day appeal period that we're not bumping up against anything.
It's August 20th, there's sufficient time to continue the hearing.
Thank you.
All right, there's a motion on the floor, a motion by Counselor Bennett and it was seconded by?
Counselor Clem.
Counselor Clem, thank you. All right, it's getting late. All right, all those in favor of the motion to extend this hearing until Jan, until July 28th and hold the record open, right? Correct. So people can still communicate with us by email or in writing?
They should submit any communications they have to the city recorder.
To the city recorder, either by?
Email or in person or by mail.
Okay, fine, all right, thank you. All right, the motion on the floor, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose say nay. Motion carries unanimously, thank you.
Madam Mayor, I move we extend the council meeting for, until 11 o'clock.
All right. It's been moved by Counselor Bennett, is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Bernard to extend the meeting until 11 o'clock. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose say nay. Motion carries, thank you. All right, we're going to pick up, okay. All right, we'll give, well, we'll give people a moment to leave if they're ready to leave, but I do want to get the most, get the meeting finished, so we'll go now to special orders of business. I believe we had one poll on the agenda.
Dicky.
And that was item 3.3G. Counselor Dicky, Counselor Dicky, do you have a motion?
I do have a motion. Yes, thank you, Mayor. I move that the City Council adopt the council legislative committees.
Could I please have order? Even if you're leaving, please do so quietly because we do want to get our business finished. Thanks very much. Counselor Dicky?
Sure. I move that the City Council adopt the council legislative committee's recommended votes on the League of Oregon City's ballot of 2015 legislative priorities except for item S, transportation, which I would like to have pulled and sent back to the legislative committee for further discussion.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Dicky and seconded by Counselor Rogers to accept the, to approve the legislative committee's recommendations of the League of Oregon City's ballot for 2015 legislative priorities with the one exception of the item having to do with transportation. Thank you. Is there discussion?
Just really quickly, thank you.
Yes, Counselor Dicky and then Counselor Clem.
Yeah, the reason why I'm having the, would like the legislative committee, just to take another look at this, I, when I read through, well, this is basically the league's priorities, one of their legislative priorities is to pass a comprehensive transportation funding and policy package, which actually I think is great. It's something that's needed, they're trying to do it at the federal level right now, we need something local, something at the state level. So I, I think this is a really good thing that they're going to be working on. But just reading through the policy side of it, I noticed a noticeable absence of transit and other alternative modes listed in there. There's a little bit of wording that says, "Yeah, we're going to do this." I really don't know what that exactly means because it looks like under the more detailed explanation, there's not really any verbiage given to that. So I would just like some more information about maybe how the, the committee came to, not the legislative committee, but the policy, the league's policy committee came to that and, and if they actually have some specific information on how they're going to handle transit and other alternative modes and where that actually fits into some of these priorities that they have for funding transportation. So just a little more discussion and review by the legislative committee before it comes back to us.
All right, Counselor Clem and then Counselor Bernard.
Yes, and I'd like to offer a substitute motion for staff recommend, or the recommended action to approve the legislative committee's votes on the LOC ballot of 2015 legislative That we move. That we move, approve the legislative committee's recommendation.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second, for the sake of discussion.
All right, it's been moved by Counselor Clem and seconded by Counselor Benars to offer a substitute motion. Counselor Clem, would you like to speak to your motion?
I would, and I appreciate Counselor Dicky's good attention to what their transportation priorities are. I know that, that transit issues are always wanting, particularly here in the Salem area, and there does need to be action, but at the state level, there are a lot of other organizations and priorities that are emphasizing increased funding for transit. And I'm concerned that we're holding up our input to the League of Oregon Cities, who know a lot more about transportation issues than we do, just for the sake and the want of some rewording for transit. Representing the city on transportation issues, I know full well the extreme amount of support the region has and works well with League of Oregon Cities for transit. So I think we just need to endorse the transportation package. We're going to have many opportunities to emphasize alternative modes and transit opportunities. And holding this document up and or questioning whether the legislative committee reviewed it closely enough, we aren't there yet. We will get there, but I don't know that changing this document is going to have the intended effect of elevating transit and or alternative modes. There will be many tough choices in terms of transportation funding, and identifying one over some of the other transportation needs that we have in this area. I don't want that to be seen untoward, that we prioritized one over the other.
Counselor Dicky?
Thank you. I apologize if I miscommunicated. It's late, we've been here a long time. I just don't have a sense for, from this policy document that we cannot read very well, it's sort of photocopied here. What exactly was the thinking that went into this, and what, what is the league thinking in terms of how they're going to promote alternative modes, including public transportation and other alternative modes, through these policy initiatives that they're putting forward? I am not at all suggesting that we offer alternative wording, I'm not suggesting that we ask the league to change. I am not comfortable voting yes on this until I actually know what it is that they're looking for and how they're going to, what discussion took place to address some of those alternative modes. I just don't see that really in here. I just want a little bit more information. This is not at all to, for us to wordsmith what they are doing. There are many, many alternative modes besides public transportation that just jumped out at me. And I, and I also noticed, just because in the, in the policy initiatives, there are a couple that, you know, that they put out there that specifically, well, okay, so the one, I got to scroll down here, okay. No change in the constitutional dedication of the State Highway Trust Fund, which is, that's fine, that, there is no funding for transit in that anyway. So I just like to know how they're going to address that. That's it. That's not, it's, this is not for us to be messing around with what they're doing, but I can't feel comfortable supporting this until I have a better sense for what they're asking for. That's it.
Yes, Counselor Clem, and actually, I didn't mean to forget or overlook Counselor Benars, who also had his hand up. Why don't we go to Counselor Benars and then back to Clem?
My question will apply to either, either of the two. Well, I'm understanding either of these two motions are to approve four of these items. We have to select from four of these total items that are on this list, not all of the items. Is that correct? That's the way I read the staff report.
Yeah.
And so?
Four from a much larger list.
Four, four from a much larger list, but there are only four of them that are on here, and I don't remember which ones they are. Oh, A, H, M, and R were the four that the city had selected. So S isn't even actually on the Salem ballot, from what I'm getting here.
It's not one of the recommendations.
It's not one of the recommendations that's going to go to the League of Cities.
So it doesn't matter.
Yes, I just want to remind folks of that it is a moot point, but also that the deadline for response, so they can collate all the cities' responses, is July 25th. If we continue to kick this thing around, we aren't participating with the League of Oregon Cities, which, this is very similar to how we've responded as, to the city's representation in the legislature previously, so not that you always have to do it the same way, but there is a deadline.
Counselor Dicky, and then Counselor Bennett, and then Counselor Nanki.
Well, I apologize, I did miss that. I read through the whole thing, I did miss that sentence that we're recommending. I assume other cities would be recommending this, so, but also, Counselor Clem, to your point, I know we get sent stuff a lot, and when the deadline is the 25th, I mean, assuming that it wasn't a moot point, we don't have time to say, hey, we need more information, because we don't even get it in a timely manner to be able to ask for more information. So that's sometimes a little bit problematic, not just for this, but for anything. But to that, I apologize for bringing this up, and I missed that sentence, but I think it's a good discussion, anyway.
Madam? Yes, Counselor Bennett?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I also, Counselor Dicky mentioned this to me last night, and it just went right by me, absolutely went by me. But I will assure you, as Chair of the Legislative Committee, we will ask some more about their transportation policy area, and certainly make sure that we share with them that there is in Salem a real interest in alternative modes. So we will have opportunity soon to do that kind of discussion with them. Plus, Counselor Nanki, I think, is involved very heavily with the league. He's heard your arguments, so.
Counselor Nanki, you had a comment?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, yeah, and the board actually does have a, an early morning board meeting to go through those items on that Friday. So, that being said, there's also certain things, and we discussed them at the committee, that the league is going to be doing anyway. Our discussion was more on how do we fit in that as Salem, and there was a lot of discussion on trying to get down to those four that we really care about for inside of our boundaries, that have the potential not to be pursued further. We're involved in a ton of transportation committees all over. That policy committee, I don't know who sat on it from the city of Salem, I'm assuming one of us did. I'm on two other policy committees, but we can pull their meeting minutes from that as well and get the bulk of their discussion, because they're, they're very lively, policy committees. I would encourage anyone to be on one of them, because you have people from all over the state who are very passionate in different ways on a lot of the topics, so.
Counselor Benars?
I, you know, I, the only reason I noticed that, what the ballot was, is because I actually had the issue, I think it was item G, the one with the three, ending the 3% discount on property taxes. And I was troubled by that, but I wasn't troubled enough to pull this item out of, out of the list, but, so in other words, if you're discussing, look at it. I think it's, it's the carrot and stick kind of thing, so I'm not going to pull it tonight, but I think we need to look at it more.
Okay, so the motion on the floor?
Could be withdrawn.
Is.
No, the most pressing order is the.
There's a substitute motion by Counselor Clem.
Okay.
All right, so we're voting on the substitute motion, or are you withdrawing the substitute motion?
No.
Call for the question.
Call for the question, all right. So it's been moved by Counselor Clem and seconded by?
Counselor Benars.
Counselor Benars to?
Staff recommendation.
To move the staff recommendation as presented in our packet, correct?
The legislative committee recommendation.
Right, the legislative committee recommendation. We ready for the vote? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries, thank you. All right. We have no unfinished business. I want to withdraw your attention, there are several information reports in your packet, some of which we discussed earlier this evening. We have a couple of ordinances to go through, and the first one is 8.1, a first reading. With the recorder, please introduce the motion, or the ordinance.
Ordinance Bill Number 1514, extending the term of an agreement with Clear Wireless LLC, formerly Clear Wireless US LLC, for placement of wireless facilities in the public rights of way and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Counselor Bennett, do you have a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move we advance ordinance bill number 15-14 to second reading for enactment.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Benars to move the ordinance forward for a second reading. Is there discussion? Is there discussion, other than among yourselves? All right. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries, thank you very much. And we have a second reading with the recorder, please call the roll vote.
Incorred ordinance bill number 1114, relating to mobile food units, amending SRC 30.005 400 405 410 400.045 125 522.005 523.005 524.005 531.010 540.005 542.005 543.005 544.005 551.005 554.005 604.015 605.015 701.005 and 010. Repelling SRC 30.415 420 425 and 701.020, and renumbering SRC 701.025 030 035 040 and 045, and declaring an emergency. Counselor Dicky?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I'm wrong, I'm, Counselor Nanki was first on this one, sorry.
Aye.
Counselor Clausen is absent. Counselor Dicky?
Aye.
Counselor Rogers?
Aye.
Counselor Benars?
Aye.
Counselor Clem?
Aye.
Counselor Bennett?
Aye.
Counselor Tesler?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. And there's, I'm sorry, there's a second?
I'm sorry.
Second reading. Ordinance Bill 13-14, would you please take the roll call vote?
Ordinance Bill Number 1314, granting a telecommunications franchise to Astound Broadband LLC and declaring an emergency. Counselor Dicky?
Aye.
Oh, I did it again, sorry. Counselor Clausen is absent. Counselor Dicky?
Aye.
Counselor Rogers?
Aye.
Counselor Benars?
Aye.
Counselor Clem?
Aye.
Counselor Bennett?
Aye.
Counselor Tesler?
Aye.
Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye, thank you very much. All right, we have no one signed up for public comment, and we have a couple of items under new business, mayor's item. I'm announcing appointments to the Board of Ethics, the Civil Service Commission, and Human Rights and Relations Advisory Commission, and those appointments are listed in your packet. And also, I'm moving for a letter of support for the Salem Kaiser Transit Federal Grant Application for funding the construction of the South Salem Transit Center and purchasing replacement buses. So do I need to move a motion, Counselor, for the letter of support? Just announced that I have provided that letter already, right?
Have you provided it?
I don't remember. It is late.
We still have information, I don't worry.
All right, okay, yes, Counselor Dicky?
I just have a quick question about this. So I, I see that it's a motion for the City Council to approve, to submit a letter. That's what I read your motion as. I need to recuse myself on this, because it's a financial thing with the Transit District, so however that works out, just, I'm recusing myself.
Okay, let me double-check this. This is a motion for the letter, which has been prepared and proofed by me, but has not been sent, because I do need a motion from council. So it's my motion, and I'm looking for a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by me and seconded by Counselor Clem to authorize that we, that I send a letter of support for the opportunity grant request from the Transit District. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries, thank you. I see nothing else on the agenda, we are adjourned. Oh, I'm sorry, you have something?
Was there an item on the information report you wanted to bring up before it's too late?
That sounds like a loaded comment. Uh, no, no, there is not.
Okay, we are adjourned.